So Paula, if you're okay with recording voice votes for Ms. Coffey and Ms. Powers, I think we're ready to begin the meeting.
Yeah, that's acceptable. I would like to see Janice's video.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I see JJ.
Hello.
Okay, Paula Francis, are we as ready to go as we're gonna get?
I believe so, yes.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome all of you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oakland City Planning Commission for July the 9th. Before we get started, I need to make a couple of announcements. First, relating to items on the agenda. When your item is called, or if you have an item you wish to speak upon, please be patient. We will certainly ask if there is anybody who wants to be heard who has not previously signed up to speak. Before you begin, please give your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak on the item, and I'll give you a warning at one minute, and then ask you again to wrap it up with about 10 seconds to go. So before we get started here, first of all, as you guys are aware, we're handling these meetings a little differently, and we appreciate your patience with us, and we will certainly be patient with you. The reason that the Planning Commission is conducting these Planning Commission meetings by video conference is due to the coronavirus. And if the video conference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. You can find them there. For anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item or to speak under citizens to be heard, if you have not previously notified staff by email or phone, we will let you know when it's an appropriate time to speak. And you can actually let staff know if you'd like to be heard and you did not sign up by emailing cindylakin@cin dy.lakin, l-a-k-i-n, at OKC.gov, or by calling 297-2289. Again, that's 297-2289. And once again, Cindy Lakin's email is c-i-n-d-y.lakin, l-a-k-i-n, at OKC.gov. When you call in, staff's going to be muting all the lines. Please keep your lines on mute until you are recognized to speak. To unmute your phone, you push star six. If you are joining us by Zoom meeting, you can also unmute by pushing the space bar. I ask that all participants, except the commission members, keep their lines on mute until they're recognized. Commission members will be allowed to speak or comment at any time during the meeting. Please remember that only one person can be heard, and if more than one person speaks, we won't hear you both. To that end, if someone begins to speak during someone else's comments, they'll probably be muted. For anyone speaking today, include commission members and identify yourself. So we're going to take a roll call. If there is a lapse in time between votes of more than 15 minutes, and as we previously discussed, there may be a couple of people who were taking voice votes in lieu of voting on prime.gov, which is a supporting software for recording the actions of the commission. So with that, we'll get started. First item on the agenda is to receive the minutes from the June 11th, 2020 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington, and I'm prepared to make a motion if we're ready.
There's no comments from other commissioners. I'll take the motion.
I move for receipt of the minutes of the June 11th, 2020 meeting.
I have a motion in a second to receive the minutes of the June 11th, 2020 meeting. As soon as I'm available through Prime Gov, we will cast our votes. And Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Coffey, for the record, please cast your votes.
I'm sorry, you're muted.
This is Commissioner Powers. I vote aye.
Commissioner Coffey, aye.
Commissioner Heinkel, we're waiting on you. Commissioner Heinkel, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. You've got on the minutes.
I've got the screen, but it won't give me the ability to vote, so I vote aye.
Okay, that's everybody's vote, and the minutes are received. Next item on the agenda is continuance requests. I believe we have additional requests, but Jeff Butler, if you can, would you go ahead and read the continuance requests that are recorded in the agenda?
Yes, we have several items. Well, S P U D 1228 has been deferred to August 13. D A 26084 deferred to August 13. S P U D 1169, excuse me, let me, on that last one, D A 26084, that's deferred actually to October 22nd. Then on S P U D 1169, that's deferred to August 13. S P U D 1217, also August 13. S P U D 1224 deferred to August 13. And P C 10665 has been withdrawn, as has S P U D 1220, also withdrawn.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna give just a minute to make sure no one has comments from the public. Is there anyone who would hope to be heard on any of those items today that were just read?
I was looking for it, but I may have missed it. Case number P C dash 10656.
P C 10656?
I, let me see if I can find that.
65, maybe?
I didn't announce 10665.
10656 is the, it's a proposed zoning change from agricultural to single-family.
Ms. Wright, are you looking at your notice that you received by mail?
Well, I have several notices, but yeah, that is one I received today. I have the other one.
Is?
Sorry, it's C, this is case number C dash 7173.
Ms. Paula.
That's item number 27 on our agenda?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Wright, we haven't gotten to that item.
Okay, sorry, I'm new to this, so.
We're all new to video conference meetings, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. Is there anyone who wanted to be heard on the items that were read? Or uncontested request for continuances, any other items that people want to be heard on? Hearing none, and noting the clarifying change to D A dash 26084, which is being deferred to October 22nd, 2020. If there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion on the continuances.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move to grant the continuance, the uncontested continuance request, requests as read into the record.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second to continue. Items is read. Please cast your votes as soon as we're ready.
This is Commissioner Powers. I vote aye.
Commissioner Coffey, I vote aye.
Heinkel is aye.
Paula, is our technology gonna cooperate?
I'm not sure. And who was the mover in the second?
Commissioner Pennington moved the item. I believe the second was Commissioner Privet. Correct me if I'm wrong there.
Right.
Now it's gonna let me do the call for movers, okay.
Okay, we can now cast our votes, so please do so. And just noting for the record that Commissioner Powers, Commissioner Coffey, and Commissioner Heinkel all cast their vote as aye. And the continuances are approved. We have some additional requests that were made after the creation of the agenda. Mr. Butler, do you mind reading those for us?
Yeah, item 29, which is C 7178, that's continued to August 13. And item 38, S P U D 1223, continued to October 22nd.
Is there anyone who would hope to be heard on either of those two items today?
I'm sorry, could you repeat those for me?
It's on your agenda, Commissioner Powers, number 29, which is C 7178, continuing to August 13. On your agenda, item number 38, which is S P U D 1223, continuing that to October 22nd of 2020.
Thank you.
If there's no more comments from the public there, I'll take a motion on those two continuance items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move for, to grant the new request for continuance as read into the record.
Commissioner Coffey, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the continuances. When available, please cast your votes.
Commissioner Powers, I vote aye.
Commissioner Coffey, aye.
Commissioner Heinkel, confirm that was you?
Yes.
And the continuances are approved. The next items on the agenda are our consent item. These are items that there are not known to be protests on, and that are nearly administrative in nature, so they are included as a group. There is a number of those items today, 20 in total. Mr. Butler, if you would, read those for us for the record, and then I'll ask if there is anyone on the line who wanted to be heard on any of those items.
Yes. The first one, item one, is P V 109. We also have item two, C E 1021. Item three, item number, is item E D 230. And number four is item C E 1020. Item number five is C E 1022. Number six is C E 1023. Number seven, C E 1024. Number eight, C E 1025. Item nine, C E 1026. 10, P C 10668. 11, C 7170. 12, C 7171. 13, C 7172. Item 14, C 7174. Number 15, C 7175. 16 is C 7176. 17 is C 7179. 18 is C 7180. 19 is C 6800. And the last on the consent docket is C 6802.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there anyone present on today's call that wanted to be heard on any of those items? And just because of the, the number of those, I'm going to wait just a moment and make absolutely certain that no one wanted to be heard. Consulting the sheet you received in the mail, Mr. Butler read the formal case number for those items, and if you want to be heard on any of those, this is the time to do so, or we will vote to approve them.
Was C 7178 called out in that list? My apologies.
C 7178 was not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no other comments?
Hey, Mr. Cravens, I didn't hear C 7173 in there either, correct?
No, ma'am, you did not. Your item, both of the items that were just referenced, C 7178, seven, and C 7173 are on items requiring separate votes, so those items will be heard individually.
Okay.
Hearing no other comments, I will take a motion at this time on the approval of the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move to approve the consent docket as read into the record.
Need a second there?
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second to approve the items on the consent docket. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Coffey, I vote yes.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Powers, I vote yes.
That's all of the votes, and those items are approved. Next item on the agenda begins our individual items for consideration. And our first item there is item number 21. Mr. Butler, if you would?
Yes, item 21 is P U D S P 1515J, and it's an application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of P U D 1515, and that's located at 1424 Highland Park Boulevard.
Yeah, so this item is in Ward 8. I'll, I'll begin this conversation just by noting that the staff report indicates that the specific plan meets the technical requirements of the P U D 1515. I do not have any specific concerns on this item. If there are any planning commissioners that do, please say for now. Hearing no comment from commissioners, I'll ask if there's anyone present on the call today that wanted to be heard on this item. Again, this is P U D S P dash 1515J, and this item is, relates to a specific plan. Remember to push star six on your phone or space bar on your computer. Hearing none, I will take a motion.
Scott, this is Commissioner Highsmith. I actually do have one question.
Sure.
This is for the applicant. I, the, the materials that were provided, it makes it appear that the street trees, and I know these are just renderings, but, you know, I can't confirm with the site plan necessarily, but it makes it look like the street trees are, I would say, on the property side of the sidewalk. Is it possible for us to do, you know, per, you know, make sure we're, we're meeting the, the city's intent with the landscaping code and get those trees between the road and the sidewalk?
Um, I think, I think it would give the- This is an application that's represented by Mark Zitzel. Mark, are you on the line and available to address Commissioner Highsmith's concern or question?
Yeah, this is Tim Johnson. I'm on the line. So, yes, we can do that. You're exactly right. This is just an illustration. The landscape plan will meet the requirements of the P U D.
Does the P U D specify where the, the street trees should go?
No, it's just the street trees are required by the ordinance, and they'll have to meet the requirement of the ordinance.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Does that satisfy your concern, Commissioner Highsmith?
Yes, yes, it does.
Any other questions or concern in this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move approval of item 21.
Commissioner Coffey, I second the motion.
I have a motion in two seconds. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner-
Commissioner Powers, I vote aye.
Heinkel is aye.
Commissioner Coffey, will you just confirm your vote for the record one more time?
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
And the item is approved.
Item 22 is P U D S P 1577B, application to, for a specific plan pursuant to P U D 1577, and it's located at 14424 North May Avenue.
So this item is also in Ward 8. I would note that the staff report indicates the specific plan meets the technical requirements of P U D 1577. I do not have any concerns on the item as the ward representative. Are there other commissioners who have concerns or comments on this item? Hearing none from commissioners, I'll ask members of the public, are there folks who have concerns or wanted to be heard on this item? And again, please push star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer to unmute. Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move approval of item 22.
Commissioner Coffey, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the item. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Commissioner Powers, yes.
And that item is approved.
Item 23 is P U D S P 1584C, application for a specific plan pursuant to P U D 1584, and that's located at 8516 Broadway Extension.
Commissioner Pennington, this is in Ward 7. I would just note for the purposes of the record that staff also indicates that this meets the specific or technical requirements of the P U D. Do you want to address anything here?
No, I've got nothing, nothing to add. Happy it's happening.
Other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll ask, is there anyone on the line today that wanted to be heard on this item? Again, P U D S P dash 1584C, star six, or the space bar to unmute. Hearing no further comments, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move approval of item 23.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second to approve P U D S P 1584C. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Powers, I vote aye.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Heinkel, yes.
And the item is approved.
Item 24 is P U D S P 1738A, application for a specific plan pursuant to approval of P U D 1738, located at 2301 North 145th Street.
Okay, on this item, staff indicates that the specific plan meets the technical requirements of P U D 1738. However, at the approval of P U D 1738, the Planning Commission reserved the right specifically to review traffic queuing and, and flow, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have the applicant on the line, or the applicant's representative, which is Mark Ferris. Mr. Ferris, are you available to make some comments about the traffic circulation relating to this specifically?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
We can hear you great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. As mentioned, the, the specific plan that was submitted does meet all the, the technical requirements, but specifically on the circulation and the traffic flow in and around and through the school. I would start with that, over the years, particularly since the early 2000s, various government agencies and universities have been studying queuing issues. We're all aware that drop off and pickup can impact the local streets, causing temporary traffic delays and possibly safety issues. Most of the publications that are out there today identify basically five important criteria or priorities in development of a school site. And some of those are different based upon whether it's an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school. Specifically for this site, as an elementary school, the first priority or, or recommendation for an elementary school is the separation of a bus loop from the parent traffic. And in particular, this site, that is done with the bus loop being on the north side of the school, access from W P Atkinson, which I'll remind everyone that W P Atkinson is being extended west to Gambles Trail Road, which provides good access from basically east-west, north-south. So that's the first criteria that we feel that we meet that very well, and the bus queue length is approximately 700 feet. So that will accommodate all the anticipated buses that Edmund schools anticipates. The second thing is, they like to see, or it's highly recommended, that staff parking is separated from the visitor parking. And that's done to reduce the conflicts in the morning and the afternoon. And in this site plan, all the staff parking, including any cafeteria or maintenance staff, is all on the north side and will be accessed from W P Atkinson. There shouldn't be any conflicts with buses because staff and teachers show up prior to the buses arriving. So that's a, that's another benefit that we have. Another item that is typically recommended is that the visitor parking be separated in some manner, or accessible in some manner, other than the pickup-drop-off lanes. As you'll see, along Northwest 145th Street, we have basically, starting on the east, we have a double entry lane, which then proceeds along to the west, and that is an exit only, once you go beyond the visitor parking. The visitor parking is accessible from, directly from Northwest 145th Street. So a parent that needs to come and go into the school or bring their student into the school, they can access the visitor parking and exit the visitor parking without going through the parent drop-off lanes. So that's an important feature. Another item for an elementary school is the separation of the student or pedestrian traffic from the vehicular traffic. And as you'll notice, that the students for the buses will exit out the north side of the school, and students that may be walking to or from school will exit probably either directly out the front of the school or to the western pod. And the sidewalks along the parent drop-off are wide sidewalks, 10-foot minimum along that frontage, and the students are not required to cross the traffic lane or the parent drop-off lane at any point. They can move easterly or westerly along 145th, thence to Gambles, and so on and so forth. So that's an important thing. The other thing that's highly recommended, then it's very site-specific, is that a school should develop drop-off and pickup procedures. Edmund schools, as large as they are, most of the schools have written policies and procedures for pickup and drop-off. Those are either written and handed to the parents throughout the school year, and/or they're posted online to where a parent can go and see those. So those five, five criteria that is highly recommended by basically the, the industry, the traffic engineers industry, I think we meet very well.
Mr. Ferris, if I can?
Yes, sir.
How many buses can queue in 700 feet?
Theoretically, 700 feet would accommodate upwards of 10 to 12 buses. upwards of ten to twelve buses. They anticipate maybe five buses when school opens, and they could increase that to somewhere around eight.
Okay, and then your, your car loop for pedestrian drop-off on the south side of the school, how many, what is the distance of that? And how many cars is it designed to accommodate?
I was, I was just about to get to that. There's been recent studies by various traffic engineers and entities around the country, and typically, the study has concentrated on the afternoon pickup. They find that the morning pickup is not quite as congested, basically because parents are moving about at various times, and it doesn't create the issues. The afternoon pickup, as we can all imagine, everybody wants to get there, they want to be the first in line, which can create the issues because they all want to be first. Typically, the length of queuing that is provided on this site, if it is non-impacting or non-backing up onto Northwest one hundred and forty-fifth, is nine hundred and eighty feet, a single lane of traffic. Edmund Schools has developed procedures to where, because this is a one-way in, double lane in, they actually have staff posted and can utilize, and have done that in other schools, the second lane and bring traffic in, and basically, they have someone that's directing traffic. And theoretically, that could add up to another four hundred feet, so potentially, there's thirteen hundred and eighty feet. Now that being said, most of the studies have been done on the afternoon, or the, what they call the peak traffic. And basically, what they find through all of their studies and traffic counting and analysis is that the length of the queue should be somewhere between five percent and eight percent of the student population. And that's based upon many studies at many different schools around the country. To begin, the school will have approximately upwards of four hundred and fifty students. If we use a five percent, that would require a queuing of five hundred and sixty-two feet. And those queue lengths are based upon no car backing up into the adjacent traffic lane, which would be one hundred and forty-fifth. So if we go from the low end of five hundred and sixty-two up to a high percentage of eight percent of the student population, that could approach nine hundred feet of total lane or storage, without any car backing up onto one hundred and forty-fifth. Potentially, the student population could grow as high as nine hundred to nine hundred and fifty students, and that's totally based upon the development that goes on in the area. There are preliminary plaques and other plans that show it could be single-family residential, so on and so forth. If you use those, if you use that number, then you could have a low of about eleven hundred feet, up to as high as nineteen hundred feet. But what the studies around the country have indicated, that the higher the student population, it's actually a lower percentage. So we would anticipate somewhere in the twelve to thirteen hundred feet. And again, that's totally dependent upon how the land develops, if it's-
Right, around it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, for my fellow commissioners, just as a reminder on this, the, this was a discussion that happened over a couple of meetings, and the issue is really that this, this elementary school is being developed adjacent to Penn, which is a super, super busy, that area of Penn is extraordinarily busy, dense with traffic, particularly at what would be drop-off and pickup time. I think that you guys have done an extraordinary job of trying to accommodate the reality of the traffic problem that exists there, making that entry on the far east side, an entry only, kind of averts congestion with the coffee shop that's being developed to the south there, which frankly was an oversight on, on, on my part. But the, I think that will help a lot and give you the queuing you need within two lanes to get to, you know, thirteen eighty, which accommodates a good bit of what you're ultimately going to need. JJ, I guess this would be a question for you. My only question is, is there anything that, I mean, would they be prohibited from queuing within the public streets? Is there something, an ordinance on the books that, if it begins to be a problem as that school grows, would, would they not be able to queue in the street? Would the city have some recourse there? And if not, is there something we do, need to include at this point to, to protect against that?
JJ, you're muted.
Sorry, there's nothing that I'm aware of unless it's posted for no parking or queuing.
Okay. How do we do that?
Traffic Commission.
Be a traffic commission issue? Is there anything we can include in this application that would eliminate that concern?
Not on a specific plan.
Okay.
PUD, yes.
Well, as I say, I'm fairly convinced they've done all they can do here. It sounds to me. We, we've had other people in different wards come in and, and address this concern, particularly as Mr. Ferris pointed out, at draw, at pickup time in the afternoon. I remember a case out in Mustang where people were, were fairly irritated, just with the traffic backing up into the street. So I guess if it became an issue at that point, traffic commission could pick it up. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, look, Mr. Ferris, I appreciate all the work. I appreciate the work of Edmund Public Schools on this. And, and, you know, as I said, in trying to make this as, as development-friendly as they can. I think you guys have done a great job here. Commissioner Claire is kind of our traffic guru. I don't know if he or other people have comments on this. I'm in support of the item and its current, the way it currently sits. So I'll let other people make comments and then give the public a chance to comment if anybody's there for that reason. So any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, this, this is Commissioner Claire. So I, I think they've done a, a, a good job of separating the circulation, and they do have quite a bit of queuing distance. I think initially, there's probably not going to be any concerns with any backups on the, on the one forty-fifth. What I have seen, and when, when we were at traffic commission, is we did have schools kind of come in a couple of different times and, and request streets be converted to one way to help with some of the congestion. But those are mostly older schools that are being designed to some of these new standards and criteria that Mr. Ferris mentioned. So I don't really see any concern there, and the only, the only thing that, that could be an issue is a lot of times, parents will try to skip the queue line and and avoid the congestion, and they'll, and they'll just park on, on a city street to run in and, and get there. And that in turn can kind of cause a bottleneck. So if that becomes an issue, like you mentioned, that would be something that traffic commission would need, need to address at that time.
But you feel comfortable that they, that that could be done then as it develops?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I really don't see that being an issue for, for many, many years.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here from the public that wanted to be heard on this item today. And again, just, this is for PUD SP seventeen thirty-eight A. Star six on your phone to unmute, or the space bar.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Powers here. I actually have a couple of comments. I, I don't like being caught in this situation where we couldn't have anticipated this at the PUD stage, when we would have had the opportunity to address it directly, and then to find out later, when we do have the opportunity to address it directly at specific plan stage, that it's too late for us to address it. So maybe we need to find a better way to deal with these kind of things in the future. Doesn't do us much good to have, you know, sort of part control, but it's too late on, on things like this. I have full faith and confidence in the traffic commission. I'm sure they'll do the right thing when time comes. But just in terms of process, I think that's very problematic. And the other thing is just a comment for ourselves and our staff. I noticed that this item and the item before it both don't have either an aerial photo or a zoning map attached to them. I hope that's not a trend.
Commissioner Powers, I, I'll tell you, I think that we do have the tools at our disposal here. If we were uncomfortable with the circulation plan that's proposed, I think we could deny this, this specific plan, and force them to redo it, because I remember, and I confirm this with staff, that we did specifically reserve the right to review and approve this at this stage. So if, if we are uncomfortable, we could deny it on those grounds and force them to revisit that circulation and traffic pattern. I think what I'm convinced by their application is that they've done the best job they can to create that separation and to create sort of get to the maximum end of those thresholds that he talked about, having seven hundred feet for buses, thirteen hundred and eighty feet for cars, and he mentioned in a worst-case scenario that it could get to nineteen hundred feet. And we do have a tool, we do have tools at our disposal if it were to get into that worst-case scenario where we could prevent queuing in the roads. So I feel like we have a tool, but if you're really uncomfortable, we do have it within our ability here to deny this because of what we did at the PUD process stage.
Perhaps I misunderstood what was said earlier. I don't have a particular problem with this, with this proposal. I think it has been well, well-planned. I, I thought I understood, Mr. Chambliss, to say that we had missed our opportunity to do that at the PUD stage.
Well, to restrict parking on the street, I think specifically we could have. But the whole issue, that, the whole reason we required them to bring it back for, for a review of the queuing and traffic flow was because of our fear that they wouldn't do what they've done here, which is design an adequate site plan. And that was a reflection of times in the past where we had not been able to do anything because we didn't reserve those rights at the PUD stage. And so the specific plan really didn't afford us the ability to deny it because it met the technical requirements, and we didn't make that right of reservation. We've done that here. And I think that's the kind of thing we need to do going forward, as, as we have concerns about PUDs like this one, where there could be site plan issues, we want to review in detail. And we, you know, we've taken a lot of time here to do that. But I, I think it's, I think it's important, given the fact that we're setting a school along North Pennsylvania frontage. And I know what, what a traffic issue this is for, for folks that live in this part of the city, believe me, so.
I agree with that.
Yep, so. I, I'll just make the comment that I, Commissioner Powers is spot-on, and, and I think this is something we should be attentive to. I am in support of this item the way it's configured. I'd like to give the public a chance, if anybody wanted to comment on this matter, again, star six or the space bar to unmute yourself. I'll allow just a moment to see if there's anybody else that wants to be heard, and if not, I'll call for a motion. Hearing none, I'll take a motion on the item.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move approval of item twenty-four.
Claire. I have a motion in a second to approve PUD SP seventeen thirty-eight A. Please cast your votes when available. And that second came from Commissioner Claire, is correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Heimle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Coffee, yes.
And the motion carries. Mr. Ferris, thank you so much for making yourself available to walk us through that and explain everything. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-five is case number DA twenty-six one zero five. An application for consideration of lot split, lot split deed approval, and the location is fifty-nine hundred South Main Avenue. Also a variance to section three point four point four point C point two B of the subdivision regulations.
This is Jared in Development Services. I'll do a real quick summary of it. But before I do that, I believe there was somebody on the line right after the consent agenda that was approved that was asking about C seventy-one seventy-eight. And I just wanted to make sure that they knew that that had been continued to August thirteenth. I believe it was Mr. Gable that was on the line. So before we got too far along, I wanted to make sure he was aware of that.
You said that was Mr. Gable?
Yes.
Mr. Gable, were you aware that that item had been continued to August the thirteenth?
No, I wasn't, but thank you for the heads up. I will adjourn myself.
We appreciate it. I'm so sorry for that. Thank you, Jared, for confirming the continuance.
Thank you. No problem. Does everyone hear me okay? Polly indicated I might not be coming through very clear.
Your, your, your voice is very choppy.
We'll get closer to my mic here for a second. Is that, is that any better?
We can hear you. It's just choppy.
Okay. So this, this item here is an application by the Oklahoma City Public Works Department to split an existing platted lot or portions of it into five additional pieces. This lot is greater than five acres in size, so normally, we could do this administratively. But if you're looking at the case map, their parcel one does not have direct frontage to a street. They're taking access off of a private drive. And so because of that, the, the item needs a variance in order to give them that lot in that configuration. There are three TEs, the Public Works Department and the Utilities Division have discussed this, and everyone's in favor of the TEs. And if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioner Heisman, this is your ward. Do you want to lead the discussion?
Sure. I, I don't have any, you know, fundamental issues with the, the application, but I do, you know, we, we see a lot of projects like, you know, lot splits and, and breaking things down into new parcels. And one of the things that I'm used to seeing is Public Works protesting this exact same configuration whenever private interests do it. So, you know, I, I'm fine with the city doing this, but I also, you know, I want to make a point today of saying that I think the city should extend the same courtesy to most, you know, private applicants in this case. I'll allow city staff to expound on why they do that, or why they think this case is unique. I, I suppose because it's city, city property in this case. But a lot of the reasons that I hear for requiring street frontage typically has to do with, you know, obviously, property access or utility access onto the site. And I do think that there are instruments in the private world to handle those issues without the city of Oklahoma City requiring that of applicants. I think we end up with a lot of confused and weird-shaped lots due to that requirement, and so I worry about the future of those lots. But anyway, I think I've made my point on this. I'd love to hear any staff comments in, in this regard, but otherwise, I, I don't fundamentally have any issues with this item and would just want to hear from any potential protesters if, if so.
Okay, let's take those, those issues in turn. I don't know if Jared Norris or somebody else from Public Works wants to comment on Commissioner Heisman's concerns there?
This is Commissioner Powers. I'm not sure. Commissioner Heisman said he thought he'd made his point. I'm not sure what his point is. Is it that they should not be allowed to divide a parcel that doesn't have access onto a street? Or that having divided it into so many parcels, they have too many accesses onto the street? He's normally kind of opposed to more than one driveway where they can be combined, so not quite sure what his point is.
Well, my, my point is that the city also does not allow private applicants, or does not support applications, right, where a parcel does not have street frontage, which is exactly what they are proposing. That is my point.
Okay.
We have had- I'm, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
Okay. We have had a few deed approvals like this in the past. Typically, if it's a, a non-residential application where they've got private drives and going throughout the commercial side or office site, we generally don't have too big of an issue with it. It's when we have residential property. We generally don't have too big of an issue with it. It's when we have uh residential properties that I think it makes it a little more challenging where they don't necessarily have those those commonly used drives going through the site.
That that's fair differentiation. Yeah, I'm used to seeing this on residential. Could you, could you tell me more about why it's important on residential to have the street frontage um or to allow for that or require it of applicants?
Well, the the um, I mean, the zoning as a typically in a single family residential has a a 50 foot just with requirement in general for the lots. Um you also, you you tend to run into a situation where when you don't have street frontage, then a lot of times you don't have direct access to a water main or even or maybe a sewer main depending on where where they're located. So if they don't have that direct street frontage, they may not have that access. And so then you're stuck with having private sewer or water easements coming across. So in addition to the the access issue, the utilities issue becomes complicated in that in that sense. In it, in a commercial development, a lot of times you have um water sewer that's coming through the site already. Or as part of the lot split agreement, you you agreed to bring water mains and sewer mains to the to each lot um as a part of that. Um because the sites are are significantly larger, a lot of times it's it's a lot easier to do that. And you usually have more site constraints on a on a smaller residential setting.
Sure, but I I guess my point here, and I I'm sure Jan is is interested in filling what the point is. Um my my point is that those same legal instruments that allow a commercial developer to to handle these issues exist also for residential, correct? Isn't that your understanding?
Ace, this is, I would agree with you that those same private instruments exist. It's nothing more than a recorded public document um creating an easement between two property owners. It's it can be done all the time regardless of property type.
Right. And so I guess.
Here's the problem with that, though. This Commissioner Powers, here's the problem with it, though. You're talking about, you know, in where you're talking about a a commercial development where, you know, the provision of water and sewer is part of the zoning process through PUD or SPOD, that's one thing. If you're talking about relying entirely upon private instruments to provide that access, then the city is in a position where, you know, the the enforcement of those may fall outside of its ability. And I or or become a little more dicey than it is through a straightforward zoning case.
I think that's, I think that's a, I think that's a fair point, and it's certainly a point that, you know, a fair thing for the city to take into account when it's reviewing how likely it is that those private parties are going to create public issues. Um so I think that's, I think that makes some sense. Ace, I think your point is a good one in that we should review these cases um on their merits and basically information in front of us regardless of who the applicant is, and we should give that grace and extend it. Uh whether that's the city applying or a residential person applying or a private commercial developer or anyone else. And that we should just be consistent and objective in that regard, and I think that's true. So.
Um I thi- I think you made my point better than I could. Thank you, Scott.
Is there anybody else who has comments on this particular case, other commissioners? Hearing none, I would just ask if there's anybody that wants to be heard on the on the matter from the public. And again, just for clarification, this is DA dash 26105. You push star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer. I'll give just a moment before we go any further to see if anybody wants to be heard on this item. Hearing no one, um I need a motion first on the variance, Commissioner Heisman.
Okay, I uh I would move for uh approving variance to section 3.4.4 point C point 2B um on item DA dash 25971.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Coffee.
I have a motion and a second to approve the item. Prove the variance to section 3.4.4 C 2B of the subdivision regulations. Commissioner Coffee did second the motion, and when available, we will vote.
Commissioner Coffee, yes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Heinkel?
Yes.
Variance is approved. I now need a motion on the application itself.
Um I move approval on item DA dash 25971.
Subject to the technical valuations.
Subject to the technical valuation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Coffee.
Have a motion and a second to approve DA 25971. Please cast your votes.
Yes, Commissioner Coffee.
Still waiting for our system. There it is. Commissioner Heinkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Pennington? And the item passes. Item 26.
PC 10667 is is an application to rezone 1429 East Euclid Street from R1 to R4.
This is JJ Chambliss with Development Services. This application seeks to rezon one-third acre tract at the northwest corner of Euclid and Fonshale from the current zoning of R1 to R4. Uh staff's review found it to be in conformance with urban median luda, uh recommends approval, and Connor Geist is the applicant.
Mr. Geist, are you with us today?
Uh, yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about the application?
Uh, this is Trent Braden. I'm with Connor Geist. The building to the west is the building that will be remodeled to the uh multifamily. The building to the east on the property is an abandoned single-family house that we will be tearing down. And that's where the parking lot will be, just to be clear. I believe um we sent in a site plan uh so you can see the future use of it.
Got it. And I'm sorry, what was your name just for the purposes of the record?
Trent Braden.
Trent Braden. And what's your address, Mr. Braden?
71 Ford Northeast 17th Street, Oklahoma City.
Mr. Geist, what's your address for the record?
Uh, it's 910 West Hill Street, Oklahoma City.
Thank you very much. Um Commissioner Pennington, this is in your ward. Do you want to lead us off with questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I do. I I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, Mr. Braden, we are neighbors, and I didn't even realize we are neighbors. I live on 18.
Um.
So that's a, it's a coincidence. Uh we are really close.
We're very close.
Um I just want to say two things that I mentioned to Mr. Geist, and he and I had a good conversation yesterday. One, I recognize that there is apartments that are that are a block away, less than a block away. Um and but well, that an issue that that Councilwoman Nice and I have uh discussed numerous times is about the appropriateness of putting this high multifamily next to a lot of single family in northeast Oklahoma City. So what I did tell uh Mr. Geist, what I requested was a site plan, even though I know that has no bearing on our decision to rezon on this the straight zoning case. I still wanted to see it in hopes that that may alleviate some of the concerns that you will face when this goes to the city council. Um the other issue that I raised was needing to meet with uh the Neighborhood Association to make sure that they've had an opportunity to weigh in. And again, that's something we discussed that I think we can accomplish between now and the time that this goes before city councils. So just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was, those were my issues and that we discussed them and we're working through them. But that's all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pennington. Are there other commissioners who have questions for the applicants?
Uh this Commissioner Powers, I would certainly have liked to have um some information about the outcome of the meeting with neighbors before we were voting on this. But um I I will note that in the staff report um on page six, there is the comment that the maximum number of units would be 11. But then it goes on to say um that the the open space requirements, the setbacks, et cetera, uh will impact the number of dwelling units that can be developed. I don't see anything in here that indicates how many dwelling units will in fact be developed. And I would like that information before uh I could support this application.
Sure. Mr. Geist, do you want to talk about how many units you're going to have and what that's going to look like?
Yes, um this is Mr. Braden. We are planning on having 11 units. Nine will be one bed, one bath. Two will be two bed, one bath.
There's really no way for us to limit that, Commissioner Powers, um because of the nature of the application. Um what Commissioner Pennington, you look like you're trying to say something to what?
Sorry, I was, you were, I was saying the same thing. It's it's a straight zoning case, so we don't even have that option.
Yeah, I I would note, this is a fairly small parcel. Um I mean, it's not a large parcel of land. What's, what is the total square footage? It's on here somewhere, but.
Great.
Point 33 acres.
Yes.
So um JJ, for Commissioner Powers' benefit, what would be the total number of units on R4 they could put on point 33 acres by code?
I think we did 11 was the max.
So that is the most they could put.
Yes, sir. We called in about that before we um looked at the property to confirm that.
Okay, so I don't know.
So my comment, my comment, uh Mr. Chairman, was that the staff report then goes on to say that that common space requirement, the setbacks on front and sides, height limitations, et cetera, would impact the number of dwelling units that can be developed. That seemed to me to indicate that something less than 11 would be the maximum that would, as a matter of fact, be uh developable. That was the point of my question.
Gotcha. Well, that's certainly a risk that the applicants are taking, honestly, by doing a straight zoning that they're limited by the code. So um are there other commissioners who have questions or comments for the applicants? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anybody present that wants to be heard on this matter today from the public. And this is for PC 10667. Star six to unmute your phone or the space bar on your computer if you've joined us by video. And I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody would like to take us up on that. While I'm pausing, I'll remind you, if you're listening in as a member of the public, uh if you are to be disconnected or not able to communicate for some reason, uh you can call 405-297-2289 to report your technical issue. Uh and I know city staff will be very gracious to try and help you um so we can get it to where you can communicate with us. Hearing no additional comments on the item and no comments from commissioners, I'll take a motion on the item if you're ready to make it, Commissioner Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of item 26.
Commissioner Privet, second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council for PC 10667. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Coffee? Commissioner Heinkel?
Hi.
Commissioner Coffee?
Yes.
And the item is approved. Mr. Geist, Mr. Braden, thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 27, uh case number C 7173 is a preliminary plat of Santa Fe Crossing addition. And it is located north of West Indian Hills Road and west of uh South Santa Fe Avenue.
This is Jared again. Hopefully you can hear me better. I don't know.
Yes, you sound a lot better. Well done.
Okay, I I got out and then got back in, so hopefully that solved it. So this uh this is for a 177 single-family lot residential subdivision. Um it's on 52.33 acres with a gross residential density of 3.38 dwelling units per acre. Um they are going to be taking access off of one entrance from West Indian Hills Road and one entrance uh from South Santa Fe Avenue. There are five TEs. We're in agreement with the TEs. They have indicated that they do not need a variance. TE number two, they will connect to the street stub that was provided with the neighborhoods of the north. And then they will also provide a street stub to the west. So no variance is necessary. They will meet all of our connection requirements. Uh Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting is on the line if you need to ask any additional questions.
Uh does the applicant have anything additional to add?
Th- this is David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'll actually be handling the the application. Uh nothing to add other than just a reminder, if you'll recall at your last hearing, um this piece of property came on for a handful items. One was a recommendation on the annexation of a portion of the property. Uh two was a comprehensive plan amendment, once it was recommended for approval for the annexation. And then ultimately a rezoning application um with the new ULI designation from AA 2R1. Uh so this is just the next step in the process. It is an application that is in conformance with the zoning code as well as all the subdivision regulations. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Heinkel, this is Ward 5 issue, so I'll let you lead us off on our discussion.
I can't believe this is the first time we've heard from David Box today. This is a great ad to Ward 5. Uh if nobody has anything else to add, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I'll ask. Are there commissioners who have questions or comments on the item?
Yes, this is Commissioner Heisman. Um it, they they said that they're um connecting to the north now. But I I see two streets. Are are we only connecting to one of those?
Uh I believe that there's only one um to connect to.
Well, you could, my my assumption is you get, you're going to connect to uh Mercy Lago. But there, it looks like there's also Lombardo Lane there that that could potentially be a stub.
I think Lombardo is the only stub.
Oh, can you not? Oh, wait, maybe I'm, I think.
There there are houses there. That's a uh sort of a.
Oh.
Third cul-de-sac street there, Commissioner Heisman. There are.
Well, the, I I can see it now. I apologize. The R1 uh designation on the sheet makes it make hide the houses. So, okay, never mind. I'm good.
You're good to go. Other commissioners have questions or comments on the item? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here from the public that wants to be heard on this item today. This would be your chance. This is C dash 7173. Star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer.
My name is Hallie Wright, and I'm at 208 Southwest 175th. I have a couple of questions. Um the first being, I live a, I live four houses to the east of Lombardo Lane, so I'm wondering what that impact is there? Will it be the, will the new addition uh potentially take up back up to my lot? Is that right?
You live four houses to the east of Lombardo?
Correct.
Uh you are the.
Yep, that's my house.
Yeah, so lot 26, which is shown uh on the the plan there that she's hovering over for you uh would be the lot that would back up to you, Ms. Wright.
Okay. And do we know, um I think the probably the big question for our little neighborhood here is there are cedar trees and pine trees that separate right there on that north edge our our addition from what is now that field. Will those trees or part of those trees potentially be left intact? Or what are the plans there? Will it be an easement?
Uh so again, David Box, uh those trees are likely to come out. That is where the city is going to require that we place our um, you know, sewer and and other infrastructure. And so there will likely be an easement that runs along the back of those lots. So I would anticipate those cedars being removed.
Okay. Do you know the price point of the new homes in that development?
I don't.
Okay. Do you know if they're going to limit builders in that development?
I don't.
And do you know when construction would start?
Um, I'm not sure. I mean, it's really a function of how quickly we can get through the preliminary plat process. There is uh another step that would have to be gone through where we'd have to file a final plat that would once again come before the planning commission for approval prior to being able to um construct any homes within that subdivision.
Okay.
Other questions, Ms. Wright?
Yes, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us today. I'll pause for a moment and make sure that there's nobody else that wants to be heard on this item, C 7173. Or pause for a moment and make sure that there's nobody else that wants to be heard on this item, C 7173.
Hello.
Yes, Ms. Fox, we can hear you.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Amber Fox, 324 Southwest 175th, also in Rio Tuscano. And I also have some concerns about the trees. I understand what the gentleman has stated. But this is more of a statement rather than a question. We've lived in that addition for nearly seven years and we also back up to those trees. And, um, you know, just like with any, any area like that, there's wildlife that lives in those trees. And we purchased our property, you know, based on living in that type of environment. And I can only imagine that, you know, other, other people purchasing homes out there, you know, we're right on the edge of town. We're almost in the country. And so other people purchasing homes out there, I can only imagine that that would be something that they would be looking for. You know, to have, you know, we have owls. We've had, we've had the same two owls that have lived there since we've lived there. There's, you know, all of the native birds, the cardinals, everything, you know. And so it's, it really is a shame that they're planning on tearing those trees down. I know everyone that lives along that tree line of Rio Tuscano is absolutely sick about it. And so I would just, um, you know, basically if there's any way to keep those trees, um, I would think our new neighbors would also appreciate that.
Ms. Fox, we appreciate your comments and, and understand that. That's not a unique set of comments to essentially any area of town where development begins to, to spread into. I would note that this applicant, the, the, this was a, a subsequent phase of the development that you're essentially living in and, and required a bit more work in order to prepare it for development. This is a desirable area to live and there's gonna be more construction here that I think follows this and continues to, to develop as densely as your neighborhood has developed. I, I think you'll, you'll, you'll see more of that in the area. Again, it's not that we're not sympathetic to that. It's that the tools that we have at our disposal as a public body to, you know, protect those types of issues are pretty limited, especially at this phase. And, uh, but, but we are sympathetic and we do understand. And, and hopefully those trees, you know, the, the developer, the person who ends up building the home sees value in preserving the trees for the lots. But that's not something that we can protect here at this point. So I certainly appreciate your comments and thank you to both you and Ms. Wright for, for calling in today. Are there other folks that want to be heard on this item? And again, C 7173. Okay, hearing none. If there's no other questions or discussion from commissioners, I'll certainly take a motion at this point. Commissioner Hinkle, are you with us?
Yes, Commissioner Hinkle, ready to make a motion on approval for C dash 7173.
Commissioner Coffey? Commissioner Coffey, I second the motion.
Commissioner Hinkle, just to confirm, that was a motion to approve the item?
That is correct.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for C 7173. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Commissioner Hinkle, please give a vote. Commissioner Hinkle confirmed it was a yes. So the item, uh, the plat is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 28, case number C 7177 is a final plat of Hampton Heights. And that is located south of Northwest 178th Street and east of Northwest Turner Avenue.
Yes, so, so this is a proposal to, uh, to do a final plat of 80 single-family residential lots and two common areas on 15.51 acres with a gross residential density of 5.16 dwelling units per acre. They will be taking access primarily through, um, an access point on Northwest 178th Street. They will also connect to the south and to the west to existing developments. There are four TEs. The, the developers already addressed TEs two and three. We had a request to, uh, for them to provide a letter for amenities. They have provided that letter indicating that a playground and park benches will be installed in their common area. That meets the subdivision regulations requirements for the subdivision. They've also provided their landscape plan along Northwest 178th Street, and it does meet the requirements as well. They're in agreement with the rest of the TEs. Dean Colita was civil and environmental consultants, is representing the applicant. He's on the line if we need any questions answered.
Mr. Colita, do you have anything to add?
No, I just got any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pennington, this is in your area of town, sir. You want to lead us off on our discussion?
I don't, I don't have any other comments or questions. I'm, I'm prepared to support it.
Okay. Are there other commissioners who have questions or concerns on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public here today that wants to discuss this with us. This is C 7177. Star six or the space bar? If you want to unmute yourself, then I'll pause just a moment. Hearing no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
This Commissioner Pennington, I move approval of, uh, item 28.
Mr. Privet, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Hampton Heights, C 7177. Please cast your votes, please.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pennington, I don't think you voted on the prime gov. There we go. And the preliminary plat is approved. Item 29, or 30, excuse me.
Case number, case SPUD 1225 is an application to rezone 1801 Northwest 14th Street. Can't hold on, make sure I was, was unmuted. And that, the location of that is 1801 Northwest 14th Street, and that's going from R1 to SPUD 1225.
This application seeks to rezone 0.18 acres at the northwest corner of 14th and Indiana to a spud with an R1 base. The spud will permit three single-family homes will be planted on individual lots for sale. Staff's review found it to be in conformance with Urban Medium Luda and recommends approval with no TEs. And John and Associates represents the application.
I know Tim Johnson was with us earlier. Mr. Johnson, do you have comments, things you want to add to that?
The only thing I would add is that in visiting with Commissioner Highsmith, he asked us to reconsider the access points. So we have agreed to take our access from Indiana only and nothing from 14th Street. We'll make that change before it goes to council.
Okay, ju- just, just out of curiosity, was, is that a change that staff has any concern over? I know in the past, it seems like staff has wanted to, to orient to maintain the lot and block. Would that alter that by changing access to Indiana from 14th?
I don't believe so. I think the, the way the house sits, uh, at the corner house would be the one in, uh, in discussion. And it just won't have a driveway on, on the 14th Street side, but it'll, it'll still front to the 14th Street side.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm with you. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay. Any other comments, Tim, on this?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Highsmith, this is your, your ward. You want to lead us off?
Uh, after working with the applicant, all of my concerns are addressed. So I would open it up for any comments from the public.
Okay, before I do that, could any other commissioners have comments or questions of the applicant or staff? Yeah, just a quick question, Asa and Tim. Does this, does, taking all the access off of Indiana, are we anticipating some problems with the Plaza District being just north? And the parking that goes on, on the street around there? Or is there any parking allowed right there in the area on the street? I'm just curious.
That's a good question.
Most, most of the time, and I'll, I'll let staff jump in too, but most of the time I'm used to on-street parking primarily being on the east-west streets versus north, north-south, um, which was part of my calculus. Um, as well as I think preserving north-south streets as, as primarily auto access versus the east-west streets. I, I like to see consistent sidewalks in the east-west direction where more lots front, um, to, to provide a better pedestrian experience. Which again, was all part of, you know, my intentions behind, uh, my request of the applicant.
That makes sense to me, Asa. I like that.
Yeah, that does. That makes a lot of sense. Any other commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Hearing none, at the request of Mr. Highsmith, I'll ask if there are any members of the public here that wanted to be heard on this item today. This is SPUD 1225. If you want to be heard, this is your time. You can push star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer. And I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody has any comments.
Mr. Chair, this is Rusty La Forge. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
As we're pausing and not hearing from anybody, I, it's unusual for me to mention this, but, um, earlier this week, I got a call from a neighbor that was gonna be a protester. And, uh, later an attorney that I believe is acting on her behalf, and I'm not sure, he followed up with me. And, uh, he said this matter, if I'm following the right one, was continued to a future meeting. Um, but as we just were clicking along and came to this one, I was a little surprised. Here it is. It's one of the protesters that's listed in, uh, that has a letter in here in this item. It's on item 29, right?
We're on item 30. Item 29 was continued.
So sorry. Okay, I, how did I miss that? It was because Mark Grubbs started talking and he was on number 29 also.
All right. No, no, no problem. You, you were, you were good to jump in though.
Oh, Mark, okay. Yeah, sorry about that. I was afraid we were, we misinformed someone about a continuation. Okay, I was, I was one behind. Thank you.
You're all right. No problem. Hearing no additional comments from the public and ju- and just to be double sure, I'll wait one more second. Hearing none, I'll take a motion on the item.
Commissioner Highsmith, I, uh, move to recommend approval to the city council on item SPUD 1225.
Claire, second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1225. Please cast your votes when available.
Coffey, yes.
Hinkle, yes.
And that item is recommended for approval.
Item 31, case number PUD 1771 is an application to rezone 112 Southwest 134th Street from AA to PUD 1771.
This is a 5.8 acre side on the south side of Southwest 134th Street, just west of Santa Fe. It's going to a commercial PUD with a C3 base. The pud limits certain uses and provides a significant setback from the residential area to the south. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda. Recommends approval with no TEs. Johnson and Associates represents the applicant.
Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you want to add to that introduction?
Yes, um, JJ did a great job to start with. Probably the main thing is that, uh, we, we are retaining the, what is an existing detention pond. And we've increased the building setbacks from the neighbors to the south. Uh, 150 feet in the pond area and then 50 feet east of the pond. And those two houses on that end have site-proof screening. Some of the other houses next to the pond have open wrought iron fencing to, so they can look at the pond. So it's our intent to keep the pond and continue to use it as a detention facility. And in addition to that, I, we want to add, uh, the additional setback of any fast food drive, of, of 125 feet um, of any fast food or drive-through uses that are permitted in the revised pud.
And if, if I, if I may, um, just interject, that was, uh, I had a short conversation with Mr. Johnson about this application yesterday related to his site plan. And as the com- other commissioners know, you know, we, over the past, I'd say really the last six months, we've been pretty good about restricting drive-through order windows to be 150 feet from residentially adjoining property. I'll point out that the site plan that's on the screen shows the building setback quite a distance. There's a red dotted line there on the map that could actually be the setback. And so, uh, while I don't anticipate that deep into the development, you could have it out of an abundance of caution, I requested Mr. Johnson limit, uh, use unit 8300.36 to, not to be within 150 feet of the residentially zoned property of the south, and he was in agreement with that.
That's correct.
So, um, anything else to add on that, Tim?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hinkle, this is Ward five. Do you want to lead off our discussion on this? Commissioner Hinkle, are you with us? I can't see you on the.
Great application, gonna be a great ad to South Oklahoma City. Thank you to the developer. I'm ready to make a motion for approval after comments.
Okay, uh, is there, are there any other commissioners who have other comments or concerns on this item? Hearing none, I, I have one question for staff on this. Uh, JJ, there is some limiting language, um, that is after automotive parking lots as a principal use, 8300.13. It says use is permitted for the purpose of shared parking to allow for the phasing of landscaping and building instruction. Again, for the purposes of the record, I spoke to Mr. Johnson yesterday about that in a call. And he articulated to me that that note or that, um, limitation in the use unit request is an extension from a problem they had on another item. And they're just using it as an abundance of caution. Does that give you any heartburn or staff any heartburn?
No, not at all.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause I hadn't seen it before and, and Tim explained it to me. It made sense to me. I just told him I was gonna ask you guys to verify that. So, uh, having heard, no, no other comments for commissioners. I'll ask if there are members of the public here with us today that want to be heard. This is PUD 1771. And star six on your phone or the space bar will unmute you and I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody has comments on this item.
Chairman Cravens, this is, this is Commissioner Claire and, um, while we're, we're waiting for any public comment, I did want to chime in and ha- have a question for Mr. Johnson. On pedestrian circulation to those rear buildings, it doesn't appear from the graphic that there's any access to, um, the public sidewalk out along Southwest 134th Street. Is that something that could be implemented in order to get pedestrians back to those, those rear buildings?
Yeah, there's, uh, it's hard to see. But there is sidewalks in front of every building and, uh, you can see the little white lines that go up to the north.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that would attach to the public sidewalk on 134th Street. So we did agree, there was a, a comment by staff about sidewalk connectivity. And we've agreed that, to do that and put language in the document for that reason. And we also will have to come back for specific plans so you see it again.
Okay.
Commissioner Claire, if that's a concern, uh, as evidenced by the application we had with the Edmond Public Schools, if you want to review pedestrian circulation inside the site at specific plan stage, we would need to make that reservation at this point.
I, yes, I would like to see that included in the specific plan.
So what, what we would do then is we would, uh, require that at specific plan stage, the planning commission will reserve the right to review and approve, uh, the pedestrian access as outlined in 9.7 of the MDS, which is pedestrian access and sidewalk regulations.
We're agreeable to add that as a TE.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments on this application?
This is Commissioner Powers. I feel compelled to speak up and indicate that I do not now, I never have been of the view that we have to reserve specifically those things that we're choosing to review at specific plan stage. I think we have all the same ability to review items having to do with layout and, uh, design and so on that we have right this minute when we go, when we do the specific plan review. Design and so on that we have right this minute when we go when we do the specific plan review.
Dan Brumman, our legal person is here on the phone with us. I requested and would be happy to share subsequent to this meeting. We asked this very question and specific plans. I was provided some documentation from legal back. This has probably been over a year ago. And which is where that concern stems from. So I don't I don't feel like we're making this up, but if. Dan Brumman is on the line and could comment on that, I would appreciate it. My understanding from that exchange before is that unless we were to reserve our ability to review the circulation plan and deny it. That so long as it complies with nine point seven of the P U D, our ability to deny it at specific plan would not exist. That's my understanding.
That is my correct. That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, so. If that's the case, then I think just if that Commissioner Claire, if that if that's what something that you'd like to do, and if there's no objection for other commissioners on including that, Commissioner Hinkle, you in particular. I think we should, we could include that and that would at least create the reservation to be able to review pedestrian circulation and make changes at that at that point when we're actually looking at a site plan because. Commissioner Claire, to your point, these three buildings in the back may not even exist. They may not even be there. This this is nothing more than a demonstration of what can be included on the site. It's not. It's not what will be built, which was my concern with. A hundred and fifty foot from the line from, you know, drive-through order windows. Any other comments or concerns on the item? Hearing none. Commissioner Hinkle, I'll leave it up to you to make the motion. The two changes that we have on the table are. Putting limiting language for eighty-three hundred point three six. To restrict it a hundred and fifty feet from R one or residential zoning. And the second is the addition of the T E to allow planning commission. To review the pedestrian circulation access and sidewalks. Nine point seven of the M D S at specific plan stage.
I will make a motion for P U D seventeen seventy-one with the red additions to the technical evaluation.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval for P U D seventeen seventy-one. As amended by our discussion. Do you have a second?
Claire, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Coffee, yes.
Hinkle, yes.
And the item is approved. Recommended for approval anyway.
Okay, item thirty-two is case number P U D seventeen seventy-three. It's an application on twenty-six oh nine North Bartel Road from R two. I one moderate industrial. Excuse me, from R two and I two to P U D seventeen seventy-three.
This application seeks to rezonate twenty-four acres at the northwest corner. Of northeast twenty-third and Bartel. To a P U D with an R two base to permit a single family development. Staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low luda and recommended approval with one T E. To the T E but wants to negotiate the size of the common area that we've requested in the T T E. Brad Reed, Crafton Toll represents the application.
Mr. Reed, are you with us today?
Yes, sir.
If you can, in five minutes summarize what you're asking for us and anything else you want to add.
So what this has is it's the base R two zoning, what ultimately we want, and if I could maybe get my. Accompanying item with just a primary plat, if I could get that pulled up and we can talk about that a little clearer. So what we want really is a R one addition. Ability if at some point they wanted to come back with the with R two. But the we're going to go with R one. That's that's the primary plats coming before you next. An R one base. What we want is basically a forty-five by a hundred and ten foot lot. Let's put us at forty-nine fifty, which is fifty square feet smaller than what's allowed for an R one in. An R two use, so slightly smaller, but in five feet narrower, but ten feet longer. So what's requested is a two acre common area. And so. What we what we're required to have is a point seven seven acres of common area per the code. We have point seven seven acres on the east side. And then we're willing to change and do a one acre common area on the west side to preserve those trees. And we can have some conversations about on the east side. They're like. Cedars instead of the old growth trees that I think they're wanting to preserve. And so. I don't know that those are the ones that we can save. I don't think that's the intention, but we have almost an acre point seven seven over there and then an acre we can we can agree to on the on the west side.
So, Mr. Reed, just to clarify, the two acres, you're you're what you're saying you can comply with is what amount of open space?
So it would be it'd be one acre on the west side. And then we could go another point seven five, but that's on the east side. And I don't think it's really what the staff was. Wanting, so I don't want to say I'm going to give one point seven five because I don't think that was their intention.
Presumably staff is questioning that open space and preservation because of the comp plan on upland forest?
Yes, that's what it's in. And what we have though is, you know, we have. R two base zoning and we ultimately don't. We're not going to develop it that way. It's R one most likely, so.
I understand. I I don't know if I doubt the folks are with us that were with us when we discussed this on a previous item, but this is a good example of where discussions like this can take place and changes can be made. As opposed to your accompanying item, which is the plat, which in this case is coming through simultaneously, which is helpful, but. Anyway, this is out in Ward seven, correct? So Commissioner Pennington, do you want to lead our discussion?
Yeah, two things. The first one. J J, can we can we be clear about does that wording that he just mentioned about the? The point seven five acres being reserved on the east and the one acre to the west, would that language work? For you, does that satisfy what you all were looking for with the T E T E one?
It gives us the the amount, but what we were looking for was the two acres. The two acres is the extent of the upland forest and we were our intent was to try and protect as much of that as possible.
So this doesn't achieve that. The the changes he's recommending does not achieve that goal. Is that what you're saying?
Halfway. I mean.
Yeah, let's say if I'm interpreting what Mr. Reed said correctly, they would. They're committing to one acre instead of two of the upland forest. And they're shifting point seven five of that to the east to to create additional open space. But it's not open space that would protect the upland forest. Is that correct, Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay, I misunderstood.
And this is Commissioner Claire, just and I I went I went forward to item thirty-three just because the the plat there. Has lot numbers on and it's a little bit more easier to refer to. Are the two areas that we're referring to common area B and common area?
C.
D?
Common area B and C, so it should be this the area just to the south of that main entrance drive on the east side.
So this is Commissioner Powers. I. I have to say, you know, this is a kind of a troubling. I don't know if it's a trend or not, but. The point and purpose of common area and residential development is to provide. Green space and recreation area. I'm all in favor of us doing things to honor the. Comp plans.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just I'm looking at common area B and I'm just thinking there's not a lot. There for rec from a recreation, from a resident use standpoint, it just seems like leftover space that wasn't able to be used.
The saving of upland forest for recreational area. I don't I don't think that's a good use of. The common area requirements. That's that's not helpful. We have in the past allowed use of the common area and drain it for drainage to meet drainage requirements. But in those cases, it has been in a way that allowed the use of that space for recreational purposes. When it is not in fact being used for drainage. Here, you know, if you if you save. The trees, which I'm all in favor of doing, absolutely, but that's not really recreational space.
Why not?
Well, for fairly obvious reasons, I think it's not open space.
I have to, I mean, you can you can incorporate trails or small picnic pavilions. Small playground area. That's all. That's all good recreational use of that space while maintaining the trees.
I I agree.
The other the other clarification I need is is where is specifically on on the site is where is this two acres of upland? Vegetation.
Thank you. Yes, I need I'm not following that either based on the the image that's on our screen.
So it's the majority of the upland forest is in the our bulk of our where we're getting our density from. It's that it's that big section in the middle. There. So that's where the upland forest, according to the comprehensive plan, that's where it's located.
Oh, I see it. I see it labeled there. Commissioner Claire, where Renaissance Boulevard comes south. If you look north, you'll see common area F. I didn't see it.
So that's actually not a that's not big enough for what, you know, we got this report after everything was turned in. So if you look just north of that a little bit, there's a there's a one street that's. Has single frontage on it on the primary plat. I think it's called Roti Lane or Roti Drive or something. And so that's the area that we're we're looking to eliminate that single frontage road and add the acre of common area there.
So what is labeled as block four?
Yes, so block four would stay, but then the blocks like eight through fourteen or lots eight through fourteen on block five and then that road.
Oh, I see. You're going to eliminate the road and those lots on the east side of it.
Yes, something along those lines. I think that's our intention.
Okay, I make that makes sense to me. Commissioner Claire, does that make sense to you?
It does. I mean, that becomes an area that's more centralized to the neighborhood and and as long as it's got the appropriate access points. For for people to to use it, I would agree with that.
This is Jeff. Cindy, do we have this with an aerial under it? Because my my recollection is that. The the forested area was actually northwest of that, but I could be wrong.
Yep.
So it looks like, okay, so that central area is the is kind of the the far edge of of the upland forest. You can hear that those that green stuff is mostly kind of cedar on the on the east side and then it transitions to the the upland forest. Right there in the middle. Okay.
For people from the public that may be listening into the call, we are not discussing the plat on item thirty-three. We're simply referring to it for the purposes of having a discussion about the zoning. In order to decide on the common area elements of the of the zoning approval at this point. So just for clarification purposes. Do other commissioners have comments or concerns on the common area proposed? The recommendation by the applicant that's proposed or other issues for the applicant?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I would like to bring up another issue and it is what's mentioned in the staff report. Regarding the mitigation we're doing for the I two on the south side. What are the what are the plans for that?
That land is actually owned by the same developer, so. It's there's no current plan for any I two there. That's a, you know, somewhat industrial area, so. The zoning is there, but that land is currently owned by the same same owner. So.
Well, would that get changed?
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Pennington brings up a good point. It would be very unfortunate. And we've seen issues like this before where those lots are sold off as I two after the homes are constructed. And we had folks earlier in Ward five concerned about trees. We could have somebody here concerned about outside storage, all kinds of. What are really aptly described as heavier industrial use is being approved. I think that stays a concern for me on this too.
So I mean, the I two would be the thing that needs to buffer. And so. I'm not sure how this current zoning. Like I said, we're currently zoned R two, so zoning for the.
That's right, you are currently zoned R two.
So the zoning for the. Yes, we could go and build this currently. Like I said, we wanted to go to a slightly smaller. It's a fifty by a hundred is what's allowed in the R two for a single family. What they want is a forty-five by a hundred and ten. And so it's a little bit deeper, slightly skinnier, but. That's why we had to come back with the beauty.
I'm not. I'm not sure what tools we have at our disposal, Commissioner Pennington. I'm certainly open to staff's comments because essentially. He could pull a permit and build duplexes today and then he could pull a permit and and build a whole bunch of industrial stuff there without any requirement to buffer. There's not much we could do about it.
Yeah, and and that makes sense to me and I appreciate that. I just I'm thinking about the future planning commission. That is going to be faced with the inevitable problem of that I two being sold to somebody. And then those people who purchase those homes are going to have false expectations about what that I two is supposed to be. So. I I don't, in the long term, as we're thinking about. Issues like this in the future, I just feel like we've got to find some way to provide some form of notice to the buyers in this area. About their rights or something that we can do to prevent this issue because it's gonna come up. I agree that we can't stop it here and there. We don't have the tools at this point to address it. But we just really need to be thinking long term from a policy perspective, how we put people on notice about what their what their rights are in this instance.
The only public notice instrument that I can think of that admittedly the vast majority of people don't know how to utilize is the city's online zoning map at OKC.gov. Where you can type an address in and see how every property is zoned and what's around it. You know, there is at least that public forum for you to view, but you have to know to go look for it. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't. Commissioner Pennington, do you have other comments or concerns on this one?
No, that's that's it. And I'm okay with the changes that we we mentioned regarding the common areas as well.
Okay, other commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Hearing none, I will ask members of the public that are with us this afternoon. We're on I M P U D seventeen seventy-three. Star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer. If you'd like to be heard on this item, now is the time. I'll pause for just a moment. Okay, before we move on, just as a reminder, because it's been a little bit since I've said this. You do have a technical problem while you're in the meeting today. Questions or concerns? You can call two nine seven two two eight nine for support. And I know city staff will be more than happy to assist you. If that if there's no more discussion, I I think we are prepared to make or take a motion. We need to clarify probably for you, Commissioner Pennington, the language that we amended. On T E one, Mr. Reed, do you want to provide that amending language one last time?
We can agree to one acre of upland forest. Common area and point seven five acres. Of other common area.
That give you what you need, Commissioner Pennington?
Yep, and and just for clarification for the record, we so it's in addition to. So it's it's one acre, then an additional point seven five.
Yeah, it would be T E one would be incorporate one acre of open space in the northwest part of the subdivision where upland forest trees are located. And point seven five acres of open space in addition to. I think that's I think you can leave it there.
Just wanted to be clear that we're not talking about lowering it to a total of one acre. We're still we're at one point seven five. I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Chairman, I I move approval of item thirty-two. With amendment to T E one as read into the record.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Somebody seconded on Ace Highsmith, seconded the motion on Prime Gov. So I have a motion and a second to recommend approval on P U D seventeen seventy-three to city council. Subject to the amended technical evaluation is read into the record. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Coffee, yes.
Commissioner Hinkle? Commissioner Hinkle, are you with us?
Hello.
I'll give him one more second here.
Yes.
There he is. All right. And that item is recommended for approval.
Item thirty-three is case number C seventy-one eighty-one and associated application. It's a platter Renaissance Park and it's located north. Northeast twenty-third street and east of North Coltrane Road.
This is Jared again. The developers proposing one hundred and thirty-nine single family residential lots. And six common areas. It sounds like the common areas are changing a little bit, but. I have that one point seven five acres of common area. we have that one point seven, five acres of common areas. Um, this will yield a gross residential density. It'll probably adjust a little bit lower than this, but right now it's at five point seven, four dwelling units per acre. Access will be taken off of, uh, northeast twenty-third street and one access point off of North Bartel Road. There are three TEs. The applicant agrees to the TEs. And Brad Reed and Brad Tontal is available for questions if need be.
Uh, Jared or Jeff, before we get started in discussion, is there anything that needs to be changed about this item, given the discussion we just had?
I, I defer to JJ and Jared on that and just kind of past practice. I mean, I, I'd be obviously, I think everybody would be most comfortable with actually seeing where these, uh, where these would be, these companies, open spaces, but um, given that this is a preliminary plat, is it, is it okay, I guess, or is it our past practice? Is the commission comfortable with, um, with seeing that later, maybe at the final plat?
Well, we, I think we could as a TE memorialize what we just did. Could we not?
Yes. And I, I feel like if, if we're specific enough with the location that, that, that we could do that now.
We could be real specific because they're labeled with blocks and lots.
Great.
So, um, so, uh, uh, Brad Reed, do you have any further comments on this or concerns with that?
So I want to, uh, maybe be clear that if you look at that, um, that's the area I think we're going to save. I believe twenty-sixth will stay the same. Uh, Shawall will stay the same, twenty-fifth will stay the same, and Marcon Road will stay the same. Um, and somewhere in there, the ability, if we have grading issues or something, because we have to save those trees. I don't want to limit it to exactly that spot, uh, but that's going to be the area that I think we can say.
So see, I, I would just say, I, I feel more comfortable than as long as it's permissible for there to be this change between now, between the preliminary plat and the final plat, then I, I would be okay. I'd like to see it visually than if we can't phrase it. And we can't put the right wording in to describe to, so that you still have the flexibility to make the changes that are still consistent with the PUD and don't want to commit to something right now. So is it my understanding then that, that we could approve this preliminary plat? And then between now and the final plat stage, they can, they can input the common areas in a place on the site map so we can see it.
Yeah. And, and, and just, we did, because of the way we worded the, the TE, uh, Commissioner Pennington, they're required to put that one acre within the upland forest area because that was written in. And the point seven, five acres in it is in addition. So if the final plaque comes back and it doesn't have one point seven, five acres, then it's not in compliance with the zoning. So we, we could deal with it then. If I've said anything wrong there, Jared, correct me, but that shouldn't be an issue.
No, that, that would be correct. Um, the, you know, with, and with the approval of the preliminary plat, the lot count and the street layouts, there is some flexibility for administrative changes to that between now and the final plat. The only thing is it wouldn't come back as, as, as an entire document before the planning commission. You would see the, the final plats, if there's phases or whatnot. If you do the whole thing as a final plat, then you'd see it all at once, but you might not see the whole thing again, is what I'm saying.
Our intention is to come through with a, a full final plat for this entire property.
So then could we, could we do, I think we've done this before where we've like basically voted on the preliminary and then the final, like, you know, in the same meeting. Haven't we done that before? Is it possible for us to continue to the next one? What, do the preliminary then do the final?
They don't have a final plat before you today. It's just the preliminary.
Right. He's, he's, Commissioner Pennington is suggesting that we continue it. So we do have a firm visual on the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. I mean, from our perspective, that, that is, you're right. That's something we've done. It would just be up to the applicant if they want to do that.
Mister Reed, you're on mute, but, um, I certainly want to get your input on it if you have concerns there.
Cause it wouldn't delay you. We, we start, we're still the authority that has the final, final say on a final plat. We just vote on both in our next meeting as opposed to just the final plat.
I think though, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the developer in my ear here. Um, if, I think the only issue they had is if, you know, we do everything, we go all the way through a final plat, we do an entire set, and that's not exactly what we, you know. They were going to have an issue there. I mean, I, I can assure you the area is going to be at, it's going to be in that area where we have that double frontage on that road. That area is not super efficient for us anyway. And so we can, we can get rid of that. Um, I just don't know that if I'm going to take, I'm going to take access, uh, from houses off of twenty-sixth and twenty-fifth, or if I'm going to take access off of Marcon Road or Shawall Road. It's mostly how I'm going to save the most trees, and I haven't done the grading yet. So we don't know that. And so I don't want to agree that this is exactly what I'm going to do. And even in, if this was a preliminary plat, I don't necessarily know that I would have to even with that change. Cause I'm, like Jared, Jared had mentioned, we're, we're allowed to change slightly um, from that time. So I can assure you the area that it's going to be is right there. But, um, and that's within the upland forest area that's requested, but, um, I would just like to move forward with a preliminary that goes today. That way we can have some guidance to go forward on our final plat.
As long as, as long as we're clear that we still, that in order for it to be, in order for us to approve the final plat, it will only be in compliance if it meets that, that requirement about the common areas, then I guess it, you know, we're just arguing semantics. So.
We're fine with that.
I, I, I mean, we can, we can put the same TE in here that just says that you've committed, uh, within the preliminary plat before final plat to provide the one acre of open space in upland forest and, and point seven, five acre of open space on the east side.
Yeah, I like that. If they're okay with it.
We're fine with that language.
Okay. Um, before we go any further on this, are there commissioners who want, other commissioners who want to be heard on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask if there are members of the public that wish to be heard. This is for C seventy-one eighty-one, the preliminary plat of Renaissance Park. Star six on your phone or the spacebar on your computer to unmute. I'll pause just a moment and then I'll take a motion. Hearing none, I'll take a motion on the item.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move approval of item thirty-three, adding an additional, uh, excuse, approval of item thirty-three and the technical evaluations. Adding technical evaluation number four to mirror the, uh, requirements in the, uh, enacting PUD regarding the reservation of one acre of common area slash upland forest area on the west side. And then the point seven, five of upland forest slash common area on the east side. But those two technical evaluations should mirror each other.
The, the only, the only thing there is on the east side, there won't be upland forest because it doesn't exist. It's just point seven, five of, of open space. So I'm, I'm good with that. I'll take a second on that motion.
Mister Privet, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat to C seventy-one eighty-one, subject to the technical evaluations as amended. Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Hinkle, yes.
And the application is approved. Item thirty-four?
Case number SPD twelve twenty-six is, is an application reason twelve, five, zero, one, southwestern avenue from SPD eight seventy-two to SPD twelve twenty-six.
This is a two-point-two acre site on the west side of western, uh, south of southwest one hundred nineteenth street. It's an SPUD with an O two base, but adds convenience sales to the, uh, office and commercial use is currently permitted under the existing BUD. And also requests to, uh, increase the signage allowed, uh, for the site. Staff found to be in conformance with urban low, but recommended two TEs. TE one to address our concerns over the increased signage. We, um, request that there will only be one freestanding sign. Uh, the applicant agrees with that. TE. TE two was, uh, request about screening, um, rooftop mechanical equipment. I think the applicant disagrees with that. TE says the, um, building is already built and the, uh, the top of the building is minimally visible to the west. And David Box represents the application.
Good afternoon, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. Uh, as, uh, Mister Chamber stated, the, the one TE, uh, TE one, we do agree to. TE two, um, we don't agree to. One of the buildings is built. The second building is not yet built, but the one building that is built, uh, i- if you go and look, any equipment is minimally visible at best. Uh, there are multiple commercial strip centers up and down western. None of them have screening. And more importantly, if you look at the aerial for this site, uh, half of the site backs up to a, a large parking lot that is utilized by the church. And the other half backs up to a, the side of a multifamily apartment building. I just see no reason why screening would be necessary. Um, the increase in the signage is due to the fact that we're now going to have a second building. Um, and we can have many more tenants than would be able to fit on an eight-foot monument sign. Um, if you look at the staff report and look at that stretch of western, you have signs range from eight feet all the way up to thirty feet. So the sixteen-foot requirement that we have, uh, sought through this application is certainly compatible with what you expect to see up and down western in this area. So uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, anyone may have.
Thank you, Mister Box. Um, Commissioner Hinkle, this is a Ward five case. I'll let you lead off our discussion.
Uh, Mister Box's video, her voice broke up. Are they for or against the first TE of limiting the signage?
They have no problem with the first TE. They object to the second TE.
Okay. Um, yeah, this is adequate for this area, um, exactly what's to the north of it. Um, being inter. Commissioners have to say that I'm once again, another nice ad for South of Long City.
Are there other commissioners who have, uh, questions for the applicant or comments on the item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll ask if there are members of the public with us today that want to be heard on this item. This is SPD twelve twenty-six. SPD twelve twenty-six, star six on your phone or the spacebar on your computer to unmute, and I'll pause just a moment. Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, I'll take a motion on the item. Commissioner Hinkle, if you're ready to make one.
Yeah, I'll move approval of stud twelve twenty-six, deleting TE two.
Commissioner Coffey, second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council on SPD twelve twenty-six. Amending the TEs to delete TE number two. Please cast your votes.
Coffey, yes.
Hinkle, yes.
And the application is approved.
Thank you.
On the city council. Thank you.
Item thirty-five is SPD twelve twenty-seven, an application to rezone ninety-one, zero, one, northwestern avenue from SPD thirty-three to SPD twelve twenty-seven.
This is a three-point-two acres at the northwest corner of Ninetieth and Western. Going from one spud to a spud with a C three base. And it's basically adding, uh, agricultural processing and horticultural use to permit, uh, medical marijuana growing. Um, spud incorporates several, uh, conditions specific to, uh, medical marijuana. Uh, I found it to be in conformance with the, uh, well, and T L U D O's. And approval of one TE that the applicant agrees to. And Johnson and so forth will present the app.
Mister Johnson, I know you're with us. Do you have things you want to add on this item?
Good afternoon. This is Mark Zitzow, uh, one E Sheridan Avenue. Um, so this, as JJ mentioned, this is an existing site that we're really seeking to bring into conformance. It was built before modern zoning codes and parking regulations. The, as for the TE, we agree with the second part of the TE that the drive would be narrowed if the property was ever redeveloped. Uh, along with that, uh, we spoke with, uh, Commissioner Powers. And we had a few additional, uh, changes in a same line of thinking to add to the spud. Uh, one is in section six, maximum lot coverage. Uh, we'd like to add that if the building is redeveloped or demolished, the maximum lot coverage will become eighty percent. Uh, section eight for signage. Uh, what we would like to add is a caveat that if the freestanding sign that exists today is removed, uh, it would be built back in conformance with the, uh, sign regulations that exist at the time a sign permitted is pulled. So uh, as you're all aware, the sign regulations are being updated. And so we thought that would be uh, an opportunity to just build in conformance with the new regulations. Uh, and then section ten for the parking regulations. Uh, we would add that if the site is redeveloped and the building is demolished, the property shall meet the current park, parking regulations of the time of redevelopment. Which again, the property owners have no envisioned or do not envision tearing this building down. Uh, so with the new zoning code coming, uh, I think there is hope that the parking regulations will be lessened. Uh, and so they would be able to, uh, build within conformance with the new code. Those are the only changes that we're proposing.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mister Zitzow. Commissioner Powers, this is Ward two. You want to lead off our discussion on this? If you have other comments?
Um, no, those, the, uh, changes that he outlined were, um, consistent with the discussions that we had back and forth about this. This is a, the building that's there is substantial. There's no reason to think that it's going anywhere anytime soon. But in the event that it for some reason is raised or, you know, reconstruction occurs on the site, I just think it's appropriate for whatever, uh, ends up there to meet the codes at the time, whether that's uh, landscaping, parking, um, access or what have you. So lot coverage.
I would agree with that. I, I think it's, I think that's smart, uh, forward thinking, um, on your part too. Try to, that just because the building does pose challenges. And if, if it were to be redeveloped, it could really pose challenges in that regard. So I think that makes a lot of sense. One question that I had, the building setbacks weren't all to be redeveloped. Those all remain zero, zero and zero. Was that something that was discussed? Uh, or thought about, or, um, is that something that the applicant doesn't want to change? What?
Let's ask you. My, my thought was that it should all come into compliance with whatever codes were applicable at the time.
Well, the setbacks we would prefer to keep at zero, uh, to maintain. So the, the property owner, if it was redeveloped, could maintain that urban feel along that section. The section of western is the, uh, original Britain township in it. So there are several buildings up along this section of western that uh, are built to, uh, the, the right-of-way line.
Yeah, you'd be setback further, I guess.
And because of the size of the property, uh, we really like the ability to utilize every inch of it, especially if we were to have to bring it into conformance with parking regulations and landscaping regulations.
Yeah. And you've committed to eighty percent maximum lot coverage too. So. So, okay. Um, other commissioners have questions or comments on this for the applicant or for staff? Hearing none, I'll ask, um, if there are members of the public that wanted to be heard on this item today. This is SPD twelve twenty-seven.
Uh, I will say, I will say, there is a single letter that is, uh, attached to the staff report at regarding the issue of, um, parking. If any of you have not to look at the site, um, there's, there's kind of just this mess. Ninetieth Street, although it's a platted street, is not really a street, and there's all, this is asphalt that runs everywhere, uh, along the side of, and south of this building and back to the back where there are other um, semi-industrial buildings and so on. Uh, I think hopefully if the redevelopment along Britain takes off, and if it bleeds this far south, uh, all of that, there'll be some incentive, uh, for, for some streetscape improvements and improvement of the area. The area would make, um, a great shared parking, uh, space for all of those buildings along there. And hopefully that'll happen. But I, I don't think that there's any reason to think that this particular use, I mean, basically this is to permit, uh, use of this site for a grow facility. They don't really generate parking. Uh, I don't see any reason to think that, that the changes that are being made in this zoning application will create any additional problem with respect to parking in this area.
Okay. Um, again, if members of the public would like to be heard, star six on your phone, spacebar on your computer will unmute you. I'll pause just a moment before inviting a motion to give a moment just to see if anybody wants to provide us some feedback. Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval of item number thirty-five.
Commissioner Coffey would second the motion.
Just to be clear, that would be. Just to be clear, that would be as we amended it during our discussion?
Yes, subject to the, to the changes that were discussed. S P U D twelve twenty-seven.
Yep. Okay, I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on S P U D twelve twenty-seven, subject to the adjustments to Section Six, Section Eight, and Section Ten of the master design state. Please cast your votes.
Coffee, yes.
Equal, yes.
Commissioner Pennington? And the item is approved to City Council.
And thirty-six is S P U D twelve twenty, an application to rezone Northwestern Avenue and to S P U D twelve twenty-nine.
A four-point-four acre site, and it's on the east side of Eastern, just north of Britton Road. It's going to a P U D with an I-one base. It's adding construction sales and services to, to permit a landscape business. Staff found to be in conformance with the urban low Luda. We recommend approval with three TEs. TE one, the applicant would like to propose an alternative to the buffer we suggested and agrees with TEs two and three. And Chris Gray with Crafton Toll represents the applicant.
Mr. Gray, are you with us today?
Yes, sir.
If you've got some things you'd like to add, this is your chance to do that, sir.
Thank you. Chris Gray with Crafton Toll representing the applicant, fourteen West Edwards, Evan, Oklahoma. With respect to TE one, we have written in our, our S P U D language in Section Seven and Eight about site-proof screening to be at least six to eight feet tall. And we also have a ten-foot landscape buffer that's provided along the residential boundaries, which essentially is the east and the north boundaries. And, and so we felt that that, that language was already in place. It met the intent of what TE one was saying. We just were wanting that clarified because we were unclear about the, the language that was used. And so we'd like to modify that to, to require that site-proof screening and a landscape buffer would be provided along the residential boundaries.
I think, I think it's saying the same thing. I mean, that's my opinion. It's, it's, it's just requiring you to make, you can't see through it, so. And it has to be at least six feet tall. So it sounds like we can leave that one alone.
I'm in complete agreement with, with the chairman. It sounds like it says the same thing, but I'm in agreement that it needs to stay to make sure that in plain language that outcome is achieved.
Well, and this, this is Commissioner Claire, but my, my comment on that was that I had some language suggestions. Number one include, it says visual buffer, but I think only landscape will grow. So including landscape grows to a height of six or eight feet is the, and then impervious is more applicable to paving and not allowing liquid to pass through paving. I think landscape areas want to be pervious. So I think what they're trying to get is you can't see through it. So I think it need, I think the language needs to stay opaque instead of impervious.
Good point. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to keep it from not letting water through. JJ, that was probably you. Well, Commissioner Pennington, before you jump in, one thing I want to note on this. I asked staff this question because I remembered a big discussion. And I know we have a couple of people who do want to be heard on this item. But I had asked staff to pull information. We did have an S P U D just north of this that, that someone brought to us about a year ago that was I-one. And I remembered it, which is what made me think about it. And it would actually be just north of this site. And it was going to affront Ninety-Sixth Street. And we had a fair amount of protest on that and wound up denying the application on the grounds that that sort of use would really disrupt kind of some of the residential uses to the east. I just wanted to remind you about that case, Commissioner Pennington, and just to try to refresh your recollection as, as you make your comments. But if you have other thoughts or comments, please lead us off on those at this point.
Yeah, you, you beat me to the punch. I was just about to say that. And I'll add to it that I'm certain that there are a number of concerned neighbors that are here. I'm certain that they're going to bring up a number of issues regarding the mitigation of all the uses that the landscape company has in its current property. And so what I'm hoping to hear today is very, very clear clarification about what you're going to do to mitigate the very specific concerns that I know that, that the neighbors in the area are going to bring up. And if we cannot sufficiently address those concerns today, then I am going to push for a continuance until we do.
And I would just add to that, that I have some use units that I couldn't agree, agree to.
I hope it includes pet later sports because that's one of mine.
Yeah, that's one of mine for me. And, and also some issues with tightening up some facade regulation stuff there because it affronts the road. And this is, and it just kind of to recollection for the commissioners across the street, at least what has been proposed, it's been through specific plan with us, is the Kimray facility. That's, that's in this big blank area of land across the street. We went to great length to negotiate a whole bunch of things in that, as you'll recall. So I'll stop there for the sake of allowing other commissioners to comment. But I share your concerns, Commissioner Pennington. Are there other commissioners who have comments?
I have a question. I have a question. There's a comment in the staff report about the sewer service to the site that indicates that connection is possible. And I wonder if a sewer connection is going to be required to the site.
I could speak to that. I, I spoke with the utilities department earlier today and explained that our property is, is located more than the required distance to connect to sanitary sewer. And so if sanitary sewer is not in place at the time of the permit being requested, then that permit would, that requirement would not be there. There is, there is plans that sewer would be extended along Eastern at some point for the Kimray facility. But those timelines of those plans are unknown. And, and so at this point, there is no sewer that's directly available for the, the use of that site.
Well, thank you for that information. I'll, I'll tell you that that adds a whole other layer of concern for me, given the nature of the chemical usage on site and so on. But thank you.
Other commissioners, comments, concerns, or questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. I do have a couple of people signed up to speak. I will call on the people that I have. And then I'll certainly ask if there are other people who'd like to be heard as well. The first person that I have for this item is Molly Hill. Molly, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Sure, start out by giving us your address and also, if you would, just limit your comments to five minutes. Go ahead, please.
Yes, my address is twenty-two hundred Northeast Ninety-Sixth. I am, I live on the property due east of the landscape company. And when Kimray proposed their project, I brought this item up then, and I want to bring it up again, that the pond that you see on the aerial photo is my pond. I've had concerns about the impact of the Kimray project on drainage into that pond. I have concerns about the chemicals that this landscape company is using and the impact on the fish in my pond. I have no idea how compliant they are going to be with the rules and regulations because we've had issues with them in the neighborhood in terms of compliance with their incinerator, in terms of compliance with the storage of fuel on the property. Their, their lights bleed over into the neighborhood. There's noise from their trucks late at night, early in the morning. And I pick up thirty-nine gallon bags of trash that come from their side of the fence on a regular basis. So I have significant number of issues with this company. We called DEQ a couple of years ago to bring them out to see if they could get them to store their fuel differently. I don't know if they've made any changes. They did put a fence up in the past year, but they put it within a foot of the current chain link fence that was there. So there's no way to do maintenance along the fence line on both the east and the north side. So I, I'm not, they just don't seem to care about the impact that they have on our neighborhood. I have another neighbor who was unable to connect. She texted me her statement. I don't know if I'm allowed to, to speak for her or to read her text. Can I do that?
Oh, yes, please. If you, if you just provide her name for, for, just so we hear it and.
Yes, her name is Christine. Her address is twenty-twenty Northeast Ninety-Sixth. So she is the house closest to Eastern on the north side.
Okay.
She said, you may include that even with the zoning regulations they currently have and should be following, that we still have early morning and late night traffic on their property, big loud trucks with their engines on continually and a vehicle storage shed that abuts my property is definitely closer than thirty-five feet in a searingly bright security lights that overflow onto my property all night, every night. So I just want to reiterate that a, a number of us who abut this property have issues. We have called the fire department several times because of flames shooting up out of the incinerator. There were, my neighbor's yard caught on fire. There was no response from the owner. And we're just very concerned about how, what, how this is going to continually to continue to negatively regulate the quality of life in our neighborhood. So thank you for letting me speak.
You're, you're very welcome. We appreciate you being here and thank you for your comments. I think if you didn't, if you didn't hear us, there are certainly some commissioners that share your concerns and we'll talk about those. So we appreciate it. The next person I have signed up to speak is Robert Blackburn. Mr. Blackburn, are you with us today? Mr. Blackburn, in case you can hear me, but I can't see or hear you, star six on your phone or the space bar on your computer will unmute you. Also make sure you haven't muted your device itself if you're on your computer. I'll give you just another moment. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this item today? And this is S P U D twelve twenty-nine. Star six or space bar will unmute you. Okay, hearing none, I'll open it back up to the commission. We, this is, this is difficult. My comments would just be that. Oh?
Hello?
Mr. Blackburn, is that you?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I was trying to get this star six to work.
Don't apologize. That's no, no big deal. Please go ahead with your comments. If you would, give us your address and you've got five minutes, sir.
I live, I live twenty-one hundred Northeast Ninety-Sixth. And I was listening to Ms., Ms. Hill's comment, uh, comment. And I, I'm the same way. Our house sits directly north and, and to the, that would be north and to the west. So when they're running their incinerator, I've called several times over the incinerator and because of them overloading it and, and smoke and flames jumping out of the top of it. I've, I've called the fire department a couple of times to have them come at night after hours because it was still burning and no attendance. And we, we just, you know, we tried, we tried to get along with everything over there, you know, this whole time. And then they put up a fence and they put it within six inches of our fence, damaged our fence, caught our pasture on fire and not even our, our yard on fire with not even a phone call to let us know that they had done it and put, put the fire out when they were building the fence. And storage, fuel storage problems on that property, drainage, the, the retention pond that they, in their current PUD sixteen-ten is, has never been built. And I just, you know, I I feel like anybody on our side of, our side of the fence there, you know, should be able to call somebody and talk to them about it. And when you do, they, you're just ignored.
Mr. Blackburn, I understand. I, I appreciate your comments very much. Anything else you want to add?
I, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, we really appreciate you taking the time to be with us today and providing us that feedback. Mr. Gray, I apologize. I should have given you.
Could you answer one question pertaining, pertaining to the, the PUD sixteen-ten?
I, I will do my best or I'll have staff try their best. What's your question, sir?
Is there supposed, is there supposed to be a ten-foot off the fence, off, off the property line landscapes and, and a buffer between that and their, their privacy screening?
JJ, as it relates to the current P U D sixteen-ten, do you know what the screening requirements are?
I do not. I'd have to look it up.
Okay. Mr. Blackburn, forgive us, that's memorialized as, you know, in the previous zoning that exists on the property today. That information is, is available, but it is not at our fingertips at the moment. If, if you'd like a copy of that, let me give you an email address.
I know, I know what it is. I've, I've already seen it.
Okay.
Just would like to know how they can build the fence without a permit being issued by the city.
I don't, I don't have the answer to that question for you at the moment, sir. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Gray, I apologize. I should have given you a minute to rebut just anything you want to add to the comments that were provided. Certainly, this is your chance before the commission engages in its discussion to provide those comments.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And there've been a lot of comments that were raised. I want to do my best to, to answer those succinctly in the time I have. You know, we, we had received a notice in the mail late last week. There was concerns. And the owner of the property immediately went over to talk to the neighbor. We got a letter from a Ms. Jennifer Jones and had spoken with her. And, and many of the concerns that were raised here were also addressed by Ms., Ms. Jones and the questions about the, the incinerator. And my client has full permit compliance with DEQ as well as with the fire department for a wood burner. There is no chemicals that are being burned. It is one hundred percent just wood products that are being burned. And they've been compliant with, with all of the codes. And really, the, the purpose of this application coming forward is developer wants to continue to expand their, their service offerings to the area. And it wants to improve the property and make it better. And I think when you've seen the, the building elevations and you see the plans that are being in place, but the landscape buffers all throughout the, the boundary of the property, the site-proof screening along the, the residential size, make sure that's placed correctly. That's the intent. And it appears to me that there has been a breakdown in communications with the property owner, the neighbors. And I have been in conversations with, with the owner. And he has made a commitment that he is going to continue to be responsive to these comments. He wants to meet with these individuals and work these issues out. He wants to be a good neighbor. I think there's perhaps been just a breakdown in communication along the way and some misunderstandings. I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the, the concerns that have been raised. And I'm not privy to all of the details of the, the facts of those, those matters. But those are serious concerns that are raised. And we definitely want to take those serious to, to address those. The, you know, I'm, I think I already addressed the sanitary sewer comments. We talked about, you know, the compliance with code. To, to the best of our understanding, we are in compliance with all code regulations with fuel storage. And, and with the new P U D, we have to, to approve and abide by the lighting ordinance in place. So that would help address the residents' concerns.
Ten seconds, Mr. Gray. I apologize.
Yes, sir. The detention drainage, we will provide detention pond with the site, so we will not be increasing runoff due to our development.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. And, and what I will say here real quickly is to Mr. Blackburn and Ms. Hill and to the neighbor who wasn't able to be with us. If you do not have a copy of P U D sixteen-ten, at least at this moment, you should get one. Those zoning reg. um, at least at this moment, you should get one. Those zoning regulations are enforceable. And if there's a belief on your part that those zoning regulations are not being enforced, certainly code enforcement can look into those issues uh, as if if they arise and if you have concerns. Uh, and I certainly would encourage you to to notify them if you do. So um, zoning rules are are there for a reason and 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 they can be enforced. Uh, with that, I'm going to direct the commission. Um, it's time for our comments. Commissioner Pennington, you want to lead us off?
Sure. I I think with all that's been said and 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 I really appreciate the neighbors speaking up about the issues. My fundamental thought on this, on these issues of getting one P U D and moving to another one is always if you're not honoring in a sufficient way your responsibilities with your current P U D, why should we give you more additional rights in a new P U D? It sounds to me like there's a dispute of fact about whether you are, whether you, the applicant, are uh, complying with your uh, your obligations. It sounds like there's issues with noise that have not been addressed. It sounds like there's issues with your hours of operation that have not been addressed. It sounds like there's issues with lighting that have not been addressed. Not to mention um, what it sounds like there's a dispute factually about whether or not you are in compliance with the with the requirements and the operations of the incinerator. So thinking that we're all acting in good faith here, would the app, is the applicant willing to uh, to go ahead and take a continuance for us to have a meeting with the community, with Councilwoman Nice, to discuss this issue? And I can assure you that I have visited with Councilwoman Nice about this. And so you're going to have this issue of of the statements I just made, whether you get an approval here today and go on to city council or you take the continuance. It's just a matter of when you're going to deal with it, not if.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that. And and we would definitely uh, be agreeable to a continuance. We'd like to be able to to address these comments face to face and to work these things out. Again, I think there's been a breakdown in communication over time and some misunderstandings. And uh, we want to be good neighbors and be responsive to these comments.
Fair enough. Mr. Gray, out of respect for you and your client, I'll ask the other commissioners if there's additional feedback they'd like to provide at this time uh, related to the item before we consider a motion on the continuance, just to make sure that they have all the information they need from us before they come back in two or four weeks or whatever it is. So um, any commissioners have additional comments? They want to share concerns on the application? Well, if not, let me share mine. Um, so, Mr. Gray, I'll tell you, um, I have a number of concerns here. Um, you already have uh, commercial lodging and spectator sports as a part of your current P U D. Uh, I can just tell you, I I I'd like to see those two use units removed um, from the new P U D. And that's probably a deal breaker for me. Um, you have them now, but if you want additional uses, you're going to have to agree to give those up because they're not appropriate here. They weren't appropriate when this is done. Um, and this could be a real situation down the road for the city and for the neighbors, uh, whether they realize it now or not. Um, additionally, um, I don't like the language in the architectural um, parts of your M D S masonry products, which shall be interpreted as brick veneer, rockstone, split face, ethos and other or similar type finishes. Ethos is not a stone finish. There's nothing about ethos that is stone or stone like. I'd like to see that changed. In M D S provision number two on your open space, it talks about the outdoor storage of equipment and materials. This is a big one for me. Um, in looking at the aerials, I totally get the neighbors' concerns. Everything you have that's outside storage is shoved up against their fences. I'm looking at an aerial right now from December of twenty seventeen, and every single thing in your lot is shoved up against the fence lines. Um, I think there is something that you can probably do there and agree to to accommodate them. If you want outside storage there, I'd like to restrict that as an accommodation to surrounding residential uses. Um, and then probably uh, the the last thing I would say is um, when you meet with these neighbors, we we denied, and I can't say this with any certainty, but I think when it all came down to the end, we denied a purely I want indoor use on the lot to the north of you. And I think that was the, I think it was a unanimous vote. I don't, I can't say that with certainty, but if it wasn't, it was real close. I know it got denied and I I think it was pretty uh, pretty certain amongst the commission. And I I feel similar about this. You have an existing use and I share Commissioner Pennington's concerns about letting you to expand that in any way without making some concessions to try to accommodate the surrounding residences. So uh, you've got our feedback. If you're willing to take a continuance, uh, staff, uh, Jeff or JJ, just confirm for me, I can't ever keep straight in the summer when our meetings are. Our next available meeting date would be what? August thirteenth?
Yes.
And our meeting date available after that would be?
Twenty seven.
Of August? With two meetings in August, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Gray, you have the thirteenth to the twenty seventh. Are you agreeable to either one of those dates or have a preference?
Uh, yeah, let's aim for the thirteenth.
Okay, the thirteenth. There's no further comment or discussion. I'll take a motion on the continuance to August thirteenth.
Um, before I do that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I also want to make sure that the neighbors, do we have um, Cindy or or who, I don't know who was keeping track of our speakers. Do we have some contact information for them? I just want to make sure that we'd be able to reach them as we're organizing.
Yes, sir, we do.
Perfect, perfect, awesome. Then I I move to continue item thirty six to the August thirteenth meeting.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Claire, a second.
I have a motion and a second to continue S P U D twelve twenty nine to August the thirteenth. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Coffey, yes.
Commissioner April, yes.
And the item is continued. Mr. Gray, if you would, just for uh, the sake of simplicity, if you're still with us, if you could provide your email address to those listening, I think that would be helpful as well.
Absolutely. It's Chris, C H R I S dot gray, G R A Y at Crafton Toll, C R A F T O N T U L L dot com.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray, and thank you, Ms. Hill and Mr. Blackburn, for being with us today and sharing your concerns. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
S P twelve thirty two is an application to rezone thirty nine thirty one northwest eighth street from R one to S P U D twelve thirty two.
Application is a point seven seven acre site at the northeast corner uh, northwest eighth and Duncan Drive. Uh, Duncan is just west of Portland Avenue. Uh, to going from R one to a spud with an I two base with limited uses with the intent to permit a construction company. Well, until just recently, this probably the south third of the site was developed with some what I believe to be is an airport marker, electronic airport marker of some kind. The applicant intends to build north of that on the north end of the site. Staff found it to be in conformance with urban low Pluto recommends approval with two T E's. And Alex Gutierrez is the applicant.
Mr. Gutierrez, are you with us? Star six on your phone, sir. If you're able to unmute yourself, we'd love to hear your comments. Uh, space bar on your computer, make sure your device is unmuted as well.
I'm on my computer. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Okay.
Do you have anything you want to add to staff's comments about your application, sir?
Yes, I own a small concrete construction company. And I'm just looking to build like uh, like a workshop. Probably I'm looking to install a building, probably forty by eighty, the biggest. Just somewhere where I can put my equipment to protect it from people that are going around the area. Because I have already a couple of things stolen, so I figure I must build something there. It's pretty much just to give my equipment, my trucks, my Bobcats. And all the stuff that I need to do the constru- construction of the concrete driveways and barriers.
Okay, there are two technical evaluations, which is just a fancy way of saying changes to your application that staff has recommended. And I want to make sure you're aware of those, and I want to make sure you're in agreement with those, or if you're not in agreement, I'd like to know that too. The first one is it says all uses shall take place within the building. So it means it has to be inside. You can't do anything outside of your building. Any accessory outside storage must be restricted to the south half of the site and screened from view. So you'd only be able to store outside on the south half of the site, and there's an aerial in front of you there. So you can see essentially what the south side, if you could go back Cindy to that uh, shot with the green block. Um, there you go. You can see that picture kind of shows you about where half would be.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second technical evaluation or staff change is that you would eliminate the communication tower. So you have to eliminate that use. Do you understand those changes and are you okay with?
Yes, there is no communication power anymore.
Okay, and you're comfortable with the first one, meaning that you could only store material on the south half of your?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, um, with that, um, I'll open this up for uh, the commissioners. This is in Ward three. So Commissioner Coffey, do you want to lead our discussion?
Yes, I have been driven by this location. It is pretty much industrial on the south side of the location. I have not received comments or questions from anyone. Uh, so unless there are comments or questions from other commissioners, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let's find out. Are there other comments or questions uh, from other commissioners of the applicant or staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask if there is anybody here from the public that would like to be heard on this item. This is S P U D twelve thirty two. Star six on your phone or space bar to unmute. Make sure you unmute your device as well. I'll pause a moment before we take Commissioner Coffey's motion. Just as a reminder, if you're having any technical problems, two nine seven two two eight nine is the number you can call for assistance. Two nine seven two two eight nine. Commissioner Coffey, hearing no other comments, I'll take your motion.
That being the case, I recommend approval of S P U D twelve thirty two, subject to technical evaluations one and two.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Claire, a second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council for S P U D twelve thirty two, subject to the technical evaluations. Please cast your votes when it's available.
Coffey, yes.
April, yes.
And the application is recommended to city council for approval. Good luck with your project, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it all.
Yes, good luck.
Item thirty eight is S P U D twelve twenty three has been continued. Item thirty nine is P C one zero six six six, and that's an application to rezone various lots area bound by North Walker Avenue, northwest of Third Street Broadway Extension and Northwest Ninety Seventh Street. And that's going from R one uh, and P U D one thirty to I two.
This occupation represents thirty four acres west of Broadway Extension between Ninety Seventh and One Hundred and Third uh, going to I two, moderate industrial. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with two exceptions, one being the area between Robinson and Broadway Extension. Uh, we're requesting that go to O two. And there's one parcel that is uh, still surrounded by an residential development on Ninety Seventh Street West of Harvey. And we were requesting to amend that to I one. Uh, David Box represents.
Good afternoon. It's not my dog. Uh, David Box, five twenty two, Call Core Drive. Cindy, could you put up the exhibit that we shared that has the purple? There we go. Uh, so as Mr. Chambles stated, um, staff recommends approval. They do have two items that they would like us to amend the application to. The one of Northwest Ninety Seventh Street. Uh, we do agree with their recommended change. Uh, the one along the Broadway Extension, we agree in part and disagree in part. You will see the yellow color is what's representing the part that we agreed to change the application to O two, if that's the commission's desire. Uh, but you'll still see a small purple box in the lower right hand corner uh, of that stretch along Broad, yes, uh, along Broadway that we would like to retain uh, the I two district there. Um, if you're familiar with this area, it it is industrial nature. Once you get, you know, behind Broadway Extension, it's an area that uh, largely undeveloped, um, largely owned by my client. And it it is trending industrial, um, if if you're familiar with it. Additionally, we submitted five separate support letters. Uh, there's additional exhibit if you haven't. That shows all surrounding property owners have uh, submitted a letter in support of the application. Uh, and so with that, we ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, David, before I turn it over to Commissioner Pennington, what is the rationale for wanting to keep the tiny corner, just so we all understand why you want to keep that purple component I two instead of O two?
Uh, sure, uh, we'd like to install a billboard.
Okay. Second question, at least you're honest. Second question um, is for staff. I would, I'm just kind of curious what staff's rationale is for wanting the frontage on the interstate to be O two. Um, when everything else around it is going to be I two, it, I'm just, is there, can someone explain that to me, please?
I think the rationale is to keep heavy industrial uses pushed back away from Broadway Extension. It's mostly developed along Broadway uh, as larger office developments. And there's uh, a lot of outdoor storage uses, pipe yards and things like that, that uh, we wanted to keep pushed back at least a block away from Broadway Extension.
Yeah, I I understand. I mean, I I I think I understand that it'd be kind of the irony of that, I guess, JJ, is that there's a pipe yard uh, directly south of it in the irrigation station. Uh, I drive by it every morning when I get off at this and I get off at this exit of Britton Road every single day. Uh, and there's irrigation station right there that butts right up to the interchange that is truly just a a pipe yard. Um, it's a, as David says, if if you're not familiar, uh, thi- this area is really industrial. I think that's the trend that it's going to, it's going to continue going that direction. I'm not, I just was curious about the rationale. That's a fine explanation. I'll leave it at that. But uh, Commissioner Pennington, this is a Ward seven item, so uh, we'll, once you start off with your comments and concerns or questions.
I, and and I did reach out to David about my concerns. I wanted to see them uh, adapt, adopt the uh, changes that were recommended by staff. So we got halfway there. Um, David, would you just kind of walk us, you you had a conversation with me about the signage. Would you walk through the legalities of that? We all are privy to my favorite conversation about signs. Can you talk to us about that? And then can you talk about, talk to us about what the overall plans are, if you all have any for the for the rezoning?
Sure. So for the overall development or or land, we don't have a a plan as of now. Like I said, Mr. Garrett and and his company have been acquiring parcels over here for the better part of three or four generations. Um, and so at some point, you can envision some sort of larger scale type of development as you assemble all these, all these parcels. Uh, and in terms of the signage, you know, we are meeting all state uh, and federal requirements in terms of spacing. Um, it is an area of property that is in a kind of a drainage area that frankly is otherwise unusable. And so it makes, we believe, uh, some sense to be able to make some productive use out of the piece of property. It is not uncommon to see billboards along highways. Um, as as I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, point back to Mr. Highsmith's comment that we hope to get rid of all highways someday. But in the event that we don't get rid of highways, uh, you expect to see billboards along highways. So and I two, the I two thirty five through this stretch is no different.
And there are a number of billboards along that that path, too. Yeah, we approved one uh, north of here, I don't know, eight months ago.
That's right.
The uh, News Nine Outdoor Board is what we approved. If you drive it, that's the one that we approved.
Yeah, you can see the pond uh, in that exhibit and it's it's north of that.
Yeah. Uh, do other commissioners have questions or comments, concerns for the applicant or for staff on this? Hearing none, I'll ask if there is anybody here uh, with us from the public today that would like to be heard on this item. This is P C one zero six six six, star six on your phone or space bar will unmute you. Please make sure your device is unmuted as well. I'll pause just a moment to see if there are comments. Hearing no comments, um, Commissioner Pennington, I'll take a motion if you're ready to make one.
Yeah, and let's just, let's talk about clarifying language here. Um, Yeah, and let's just, let's talk about clarifying language here. Um, David, what's the best way to, to do this and accomplish what we've agreed to?
I think the motion could be, uh, to approve the, um, application, you know, indicated in, in this exhibit. This exhibit also was accompanied by legal descriptions. So we actually have a legal description of the areas, um, that will make it very easy for staff in terms of putting into the G I S and anything else they need to. So, uh, perhaps it could be a simple.
Labeled.
What's that? Yes, the exhibit is labeled. It, what you'll see if you were reading it up close, um, it shows it labels them different tracks, uh, like T. The yellow becomes T eight, track eight. There's a legal for that and it's P U D one, three, oh, to O two. And likewise, you've got the, um, the, the piece that we want to keep industrial is track two, P U D one thirty to I two. So it's, it's got the track numbers. There are corresponding legal descriptions that we, um, can get to staff that will go with it.
I, I, and the exhibit, uh, Commissioner Benton, the exhibit is in the record. So I think we can say approved, subject to the exhibit presented, you know, in the record.
Perfect. Then I move approval of, uh, item thirty-nine, subject to the changes outlined in the submitted exhibit that's on the record.
Motion, I need a second.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval, uh, on P C one, zero, six, six, six to city council. Please cast your votes when available.
Coffee, yes.
Equal, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Privet and Commissioner, there we go. And the application is recommended for approval to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number forty-one. We lose Jeff.
There we are. For some reason, my space bar wasn't working. Um, yes, forty has been continued. Item forty-one is P U D seventeen seventy-two. Application to rezone thirty-eight oh one, South Post Road from P U D sixteen fifty-nine to P U D seventeen seventy-two.
This application is nine point three acre parcel at the northwest corner of I forty and Post Road. Uh, you may be familiar with this location. It was Tony's Tree Plantation. We're going to a P U D and two tracks with a C three and an I two base. Uh, there's an existing billboard on the site that the P U D proposes to enlarge and convert to E M D. And the staff found the P U D to be a conformance with the urban low Luda recommends approval with one T E, uh, which the applicant agrees with half of. Um, we're requesting a twenty-foot buffer along the north line. But that, along the north line is already an existing drive that's paved and it's devoid of trees, but the applicant is willing to, um, provide for twenty-foot setback. And David Box represents the applicant.
David, giving you an add on this?
Uh, just briefly, um, you know, this was the, the Tony Tree Plantation site. Um, as Steph indicated, this is, um, one that has, I was confused with the technical evaluation when you read it. Um, I want, I want everyone on planning commission to be clear, there are no trees. When you read the, the T E, you might be, uh, you might believe that there are trees there. It's actually serving right now as, as almost the, uh, service road for the oil and gas, uh, facilities that are there. So there are no trees, uh, on the site in that northern, um, you know, twenty foot. So, uh, we do intend to continue to utilize that road and we would, uh, again, as JJ indicated, uh, be willing to, to have a twenty-foot building setback from that. So.
Well, so David, what you're saying is that the trees are actually on the other property line. They're, they belong to the other property. They're not a part of your parcel.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so, you know, you, you're seeing some, some changes in this area. Um, in large part, that's because the, the provisions of sewer and water are now going to be here. Uh, and so we believe this application will be consistent with, um, this area now that you'll have sewer and water.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, my friend. You want to kick us off?
Sure. Um, I, I think this is great development. Um, Tony's Tree Plantation was nice for a while, but it's been gone a while. I, I had heard, uh, last year that they wanted to put in a boat dealership, which, uh, I'd say this is quite a bit better than that. I wasn't sure how boat dealership would work with no, uh, access to the road anyways, but yeah, I'm in favor of this application.
Okay. Uh, are there other commissioners who have comments or questions of staff or the applicant on this item? Okay. Well, I have one, uh, before I ask for comments from the public. Um, JJ, under their application, spectator sports and entertainment restricted. It says further limited to indoor and outdoor events such as weddings, wedding showers, reunions, corporate events, private parties, et cetera. What would be something under that definition they couldn't do aside from a wakeboarding park?
Any kind of spectator sports would be permitted under that use unit. It's kind of all in, all encompassing. But it also, all, also happens to include event venues, which is what they're attempting to, to have here.
Right. I mean, but do you feel like that limiting language is presented by the use unit actually limits it effectively?
I E, you know, concerts.
I will tell you, our intent was to get rid of the concert. I mean, I, we spoke to our client, explained the concern, explained what would come up because of the Lost Lakes development and our attempt at this language was to remove the ability to have the concerts, the large outdoor concerts.
How, how many, how many people will your, will your venue accommodate?
Well, I mean, at this point it's speculative, so I, it's unknown.
I, I mean, at the end of the day, it's by an interstate, so I'm certainly a lot less bothered by this here. I just, when I read that language, I thought, does it really have any teeth? Is there really anything that could be limited by it? And I think I would just point out to the other commissioners that as my gut led me, it's probably the answer is no, because JJ's not confident. I can see it in his face.
Want to really limit prohibit concerts, you need to, needs to say that, the P U D.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, the hard thing about that is it gets into, you know, what, I mean, what all do we want to try to prohibit? And I mean, how far, how far down that path do you go? Um, i- is there another use unit that would allow what David's trying to accomplish without spectator sports?
No, not really. I, I can't think of one. I mean, that's the use unit that talks about social gatherings and.
Drop that down for the code update.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, because, because weddings and parties and stuff are one thing, but, um, you know.
You can take that.
Stuff like that is another thing entirely.
You take that use unit out altogether and just specifically state exactly what use they're going to have there.
Can we agree to maybe work on that between now and council? I don't want to take it out if the eighth floor is going to give us problems for, on permitting moving forward. I, I know that we have handled it similar to this in, in other cases where we provide limited language such as this.
We can work on it.
I, I, I think David, you know, look, this is kind of a good faith deal, man. You're, you're saying that it's, you know, not your intention to have concerts and outdoor events and we don't know how this is going to develop. There is residential stuff here to the north and it very well could develop. And it, and frankly, there's a greater likelihood that it develops residentially because you don't have highway access on post. So down the road, I just, I'm concerned and I think what I would want to, what I would want to avoid are outdoor events, concerts and activities. I think there's probably a way to limit the number of people without jeopardizing anything with your operation. I mean, you're not going to have more than two hundred and fifty people there. You know, I mean, there are things I think you could do. Again, it's on a highway, so I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but I do want to share the concern and I wanted other commissioners to hear it. So, um, it, I'll ask, is there anyone from the public that's here that wants to be heard on this item? This is P U D seventeen seventy-two. Star six on your phone or space bar to unmute. Make sure your device is unmuted. Hearing none, Commissioner Privet, I'll leave it in your hands.
All right. Um, with no more discussion, I will move approval. Uh, P U D seventeen seventy-two.
With the T E amended as stated.
Yeah, uh.
Would it just be deleting T E two, would it, or T E one, would it not?
I think so, yeah, because, I mean, there's, there's a road there. And yeah, within twenty foot on the other side of the fence. So, yeah, we'll just remove that T E.
I have a motion. I need a second. I have a second for Mesa Highsmith on prime dot gov. So it's been motioned and seconded to approve P U D seventeen seventy-two. Please cast your votes.
Coffee, yes.
Equal, yes.
P U D seventeen seventy-two has been recommended to approval for city council, uh, to, with the deletion of T E one. David, please work on that language a little bit.
Sure.
Item forty-two.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, okay. I wasn't sure if Jeff was going to comment at first. That is fine. Uh, this CPA, um, number three of this year, and this is an applicant's request to lift, uh, the urban reserve. Let me go ahead and share my screen with you so you can see what we're looking at here. Miss, okay. So, um, click the next one. So, um, the applicant is proposing to amend the comprehensive plan Luda designation by lifting, um, the urban reserve layer from the base urban low on an approximately a hundred and fifty-seven acre tract of land located at the southwest corner of Southwest Fifteenth Street and South Cemetery Road. And there is no associated zoning, um, application, which is P U D seventeen seventy-four, which you'll, um, hear in the next item. Um, this, sorry. Um, this application, um, there's a portion at the northeast corner, which is a thirty-four acre tract. Um, that is a proposed duplex development and a remaining hundred and twenty-three acres that is a proposed single family dwelling, um, development. Um, and so you can see the location there. Here are the surrounding alludas, um, at the subject site here over on the left. You can see, um, right there in the middle, um, is the urban reserve. This is where the applicant's property is located and is surrounded, um, by, um, some similar uses, um, but primarily, um, low intensity and agricultural area. You can see that. So that is the hundred and fifty-seven acres there. Um, here is a description of what the diff, what the, these layers mean. Um, the urban reserve layer is primarily intended to maintain the agricultural land in large acre, acreage areas until the area is ready for urbanization and to provide city services such as water, sewer, fire, um, and emergency, yeah, emergency services. And the urban low intensity base layer, it, it applies to some of the least intensively developed areas, but it does have access to city services such as water, sewer, fire, et cetera. Um, here is a map showing the emergency and fire response. So a portion of it is in the urban, um, service response area. And part of it is in the rural service level area and approximately two miles to the east is the nearest fire station. So it meets those requirements as far as emergency response. Here are some of the surrounding zoning areas. You can see it is primarily agricultural and low intensity. There's some R one, single family dwelling developments in the area. These are sewered areas. Um, here's an aerial here as well. So, um, um, city staff had, the findings that city staff has come up with. Um, the Luda designation is consistent with development and density patterns in the vicinity. Um, the public sewer, though, um, there is an issue with the, the sewer, searing to this site. There are three, um, there are three, um, sorry, I just misspoke here. Um, so because of the topography of the area, the northeast corner of the site is the only area that is sewerable. The remaining hundred and twenty-three acres is not able to be served by sewer. Um, while the applicant is proposing to extend water to the entire hundred and fifty-seven acres, one hundred and twenty-three acres where the, the single family development will not be sewored. Um, they are planning on septic and Sarah can elaborate that on the next item. So, um, the staff, city staff is recommending approval to the thirty-four acre tract at the northeast corner of the site that meets the three requirements for a comprehensive plan amendment and to deny the request, um, that the applicant is requesting to lift the urban reserve layer from the hundred and twenty-three acres. So that would remain. So that is what the city staff is, um, is recommending. And, um, I will leave it to the applicant to maybe make, um, any other comments or ask questions that you may have, and I'd be glad to answer questions as well.
Lost our chair.
Okay. David, do you have any comments or anything that you'd like to add?
Well, sure. Um, so David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. So as it relates to the hundred and twenty-three acre tract, uh, as Steph said, it is not, um, accessible to sewer. Um, and, and so as it relates to this application, I, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that the denial on that is appropriate because the development we seek in the next application is an application for a development that is consistent, compatible uh, with other developments in the area. And so we would ask you to lift the reserve layer for the entirety of the tract and allow us to develop two separate types of, um, developments here. Um, a traditional, uh, development with sewer water on the thirty-four acre tract and then a half acre development on a hundred and twenty-three acre tract. We do have water. One of the problems is when you extend the water, it forces you to achieve some level of density, but the sewer is just not accessible. Um, so again, what we seek is compatible, consistent with, uh, the area. This is the same fight that we, you know, continue to have over and over again. Um, the comprehensive plan is drafted simply to not allow for a development type in Oklahoma City that is extremely popular, uh, in the, you know, southeast and southwest portions of Oklahoma City. Those areas where you have sewer, excuse me, no sewer, but you have water. Um, so that's kind of where we are on this. We would ask you to, I guess, approve the, uh, comp plan change request on the entirety of the tract.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant or staff? Hearing none, I, what I, what I would say is, uh, I am kind of in agreement with the applicant here. I don't know how many half acre uh, lots that are served by a private sewer we've approved in the past. I don't know, two years, but it's a fair number. Um, and my question or, you know, my concern when I looked at this was it doesn't look or sound to me as though the hundred and twenty-three acre tract can be served by sewer. And so i- if it can't, then we're, we're essentially, we're just going to forbid development. I'm not sure that's a good outcome and I'm not sure that, you know, uh, we're, we're, we're in sort of this vicious cycle too. Um, this is Mustang School District. And, you know, I'm always curious if, you know, districts have been told about these things, but I mean, this is, you know, you, you're losing out on property tax dollars for schools, which brings population, which contributes to there being a demand to build better streets. And so all this stuff is a chicken or an egg. I just can't see blocking up a hundred and twenty-three acres. And the other thing I'd note, if, if commissions didn't, commissioners didn't look at this on like an aerial in kind of the concentric circle development pattern that essentially all development follows frankly. in kind of the concentric circle development pattern that essentially all development follows, frankly, this is a very logical place for development to be occurring. Especially with, you know, the turnpike and everything else, it's just the next logical piece. So, I, I can't say that it really makes sense for me to, to not want to allow some sort of development with the one hundred and twenty-three acre tract, especially knowing that it's really unrealistic that it will ever be served by sewer. So those would be my comments, just if anybody has thoughts on that or disagreement, I'm certainly open to hearing that.
I will add, without going into too much detail, because Sarah Welch will elaborate in the rezoning application. But the, the applicant is proposing half-acre lots on the one hundred and twenty-three acres. By code, in order to have septic or not be sewored, you would need a minimum of two acres. And, so that, you might want to just consider.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cravens, Sarah Welch, hey, with all due respect, this application right now is simply the, the amendment to the comprehensive plan, and then we'll talk about the zoning next, but the application before you right now is whether to lift the urban reserve layer off of the entire parcel, and the one hundred and twenty-three acres is not servable by a sewer, which is why staff does not feel it, it meets the criteria to lift.
Right, I, no, I, I get that, but you, one of these things is not without the other, it's, it's kind of like the application earlier where we're talking about, the reason it's before us is because, you know, there's a rezoning. And so, this is the precursor to that, and, and what staff is recommending is that we deny one hundred and twenty-three acres be lifted when it is primed for development because it is impossible to serve it with sewer. Everything else is, is within the service lines, so it's just sewer that we're dealing with. And I, I would argue that's, and if I wasn't making that argument effectively, I apologize, but that is why I would, I would, I'm in support of lifting the reserve, because I think it makes a lot of sense to allow this to develop in some form, and, and it can't do it under the comp plan, I mean, we can deny this and go to the rezoning and still approve it anyway, so these are companion items in this instance, in my view, which is why I was addressing it the way I did, but I'm, I would not be in favor of leaving one hundred and twenty-three acres at the intersection of Cemetery Road and Southwest Fifteenth as a, in, in a condition where it, you know, really can't be developed with residences.
It seems, Mr. Chairman, can I add, it, it seems like we're always considering updates, changes to this area, and as far as the, forgive me for not knowing very far southwest Oklahoma City very well, but isn't the new turnpike going to be close to this, aren't we anticipating there being growth here?
It's about two miles east of here, Commissioner Fenton.
So it seems like it makes sense, and I, I know a lot of people like living on, on half acre. I'm a proud inner urban core, you know, homeowner, but I, I understand that a lot of people like to live like that, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to do that to accommodate the growth that's happening near the turnpike. So, saying all that to say, I'm in support of, of making the change to the whole thing.
The concerns are in the future for city, the city to be able to serve that area, if there are any sort of maintenance issues with that many septic systems, and what the future sewerability of that area might look like, and this is, you know, this could go in, we don't want to discuss the plant, the plating part of it, but if there are any future concerns, this is what the comprehensive plan is addressing, is trying to prevent any sort of future maintenance issues if that area does need to be sewored.
Yeah, this is Jeff, sorry, I had to step away for several minutes to deal with an emergency, but, yeah, just to, just to, kind of, you know, a, a lot of us are, are correct here, this is, this is just a timing situation. And yes, it's correct that this, this cannot be sewored currently. It was, was, you know, listed as urban reserve because of that reason, most of it anyway. So, really, the only issue is, when is the right time for this to develop? And, and, you know, do, is it appropriate to, to allow to develop now, and if so, at what density? You know, I, I think as was mentioned, are, or will be mentioned in the next case, you know, the RA zoning and, and what, what could be built here could be, you know, the RA zoning asks for, you know, thirty thousand square feet, and we, we staff, both planning and utility staff have, are under the impression that, you know, we've been skeptical for a long time that half acre is appropriate for when you don't have sewer, just because if you have, you know, any kind of slope issues or, or soil problems, and you can have a failure, so, you know, we've gone over these issues before, but, but that's really what's before us, is, is, is half acre really appropriate? We, we recommend against that because, you know, it's been, it's been our experience that, that it could be, could have issues, and in our own zoning recommends thirty thousand square foot lots. So, yeah, it's a little strange because we've got these two different companion items, one before the other, but, you know, we feel like, you know, larger lots here would, could be, could be appropriate. And, but half acre, you know, that's what it always comes down to, we've had similar cases like this. So, yeah, you know, thirty thousand square feet, you know, something along those lines, a little bit larger, maybe, maybe some open space. And just something that would comply with the RA zoning, with that table that has different, you know, thresholds that somebody could do, we felt like would be more appropriate.
Well, so, again, you, you, like I say, you can't have these conversations one without the other, unfortunately, but David, you know, because we know what the companion item is, to Jeff's point, why couldn't these be thirty thousand square foot lots?
Subracks require us to extend water, and once you have to extend water, it, you can't do it. Financially, the thing doesn't pencil out. Now, it, this debate, in my mind, is very similar to the debate about the fire suppression. The state law regulates the size of lots in which you can have private onsite sanitary sewer solutions. The ordinance in Oklahoma City is void of any minimum requirements different from ODEQ. If the city is really concerned, the city has the ability to put forward an ordinance that would alter minimum lot sizes for onsite private sanitary sewer solutions. In the absence of that, I don't know why meeting the State Department of Environmental Quality regulations is a problem.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to report to speak to other commissioners, I will say that has certainly been, with the persuasive factor for me is the DEQ. When we first reviewed, I remember the first time we heard a half acre case, it was, you know, a discussion about this, and we figured out that DEQ does in fact state a minimum lot size of half acre for certain types of septic, septic systems. So, that's always been what has persuaded me, but I'm curious if other commissioners have thoughts, I don't, I don't want to monopolize this discussion, and we kind of need to move along, so what, what other thoughts do other commissioners have, or where are we on this item, and is anybody ready to make a motion if not?
This is Commissioner Highsmith. I want to back out, it seems like we're talking about a lot of minutia on, on like what lot size is appropriate for, you know, septic, et cetera. But what I hear in staff's comments, and especially with what Jeff, you know, expounded on, to me is, is a question of, well, and, and before I even say this, I want to make sure, like, I, I, I don't know where the boundary is for us in, in our decision-making process on this kind of a thing, but what I heard was a, a, a comment of when is it appropriate to do this level of density? And I know that the comprehensive plan speaks quite a bit about timing of appropriateness for when we densify the outer elements of our city, and I, first, you know, for me, on these decisions, that is what I use to decide, you know, my own position, and I need to, I need to, I guess I need reinforcement today that that's an appropriate way to make this decision, but also that, you know, the, the issues of timing of when the city and the planning commission determine these things appropriate, you know, if, if that is, is the way the staff is making the decision here, is that not, you know, part of our charge to uphold the comprehensive plan in that respect? Hopefully, that, that makes sense altogether.
If I may, I mean, as it relates to timing, I would understand perhaps an argument that timing is not proper if this site were located out in the middle of nowhere. But in terms of answering the question as to timing, I think we look, we need to look no further than across the street, which is an active half-acre development.
Yeah, but there's always an edge, right?
Well, I, I, maybe, maybe not, I mean, if it's appropriate across the street, I don't know why this is a hard line, I, I think there's also half-acre developments to the north of us, so.
Well, of course, that, that, that line of questioning on this, though, would call into, you know, question every single overlay zoning or, or any type of boundary that the city creates, period, right?
I'm not sure I follow that. I mean, there, there is no scenario in which the comprehensive plan would say the timing is appropriate for half-acre lots. I mean, that, the comp plan doesn't support half-acre lots. Why? I have no idea, but it doesn't. We have, we have to bring water in, and so we can't have this larger lot development with water, it simply doesn't pencil. And so what you.
Again, I, I think you're getting into the minutia on that, I, I want to say big picture, and I know Jeff wants to respond a little bit, and I'd love to hear from Jeff really quick, if that's okay.
I was just going to just clarify that the, the plan doesn't, and I, it does support one half acre lots, just the difference is that, you know, the, according to the plan, those really should be sewored, you know, and it's, that was the way that, you know, the, and, and I think it, and I wasn't here years and years ago, and these discussions have gone on for years and years, I understand. Probably what it comes down to is, is people have disagreements, the city may not agree with the DEQ on, you know, what's an appropriate lot size for aerobic sewer. And I think that's, that's part of the issue, but, but Planet KC does indeed support one half acre, acre lots, we just anticipated that those would be in, in UL with both water and sewer. So, you know, granted that this is, this is a sticky issue, and it's, you know, it's complicated. As far as the timing goes, I just, now, when we indicated that, that air, this area should be urban reserve, the, the timing, you know, if, if this were to develop as urban, it would, you know, I think David made the point earlier, it would, it would have to wait a long time because it's at the very top of these sewer sheds, so sewer wouldn't get there for a long time, probably, for, for this, for this site, and so we've had a recent case to the, I think to the southeast of this, where we actually recommended, we said, okay, you know, let, let's go ahead and let them do some rural development, I don't recall the density exactly, because they were right, again, right at the top of a sewer shed, and it would take decades for development to get there, and I think it's, it's a similar situation here, which is why we thought, you know, it's probably okay to go ahead and develop there. It just comes down to the density and, and what's okay, and in terms of, you know, not having, not having sewer failure, and just making sure that those lot sizes are okay. And it just comes down to a difference of opinion, I think, between experts on the subject.
Well, and, and in fairness, the city, that, by the city not enacting ordinances requiring a different lot size, implicitly, they have authorized half-acre lots. If there was a significant concern by the city about utilizing private sewer on half-acre lots, well, then, why have they, all of these years that this fight has been going on, not enacted in ordinance otherwise?
Hi, this is Commissioner Powers here, I, I think the answer to that question is because they think that the way they regulate it now is sufficient. The idea that, that somehow the city is prohibiting development on this site is just nonsense. We have a set of criteria, they support development at a certain density for a portion of it that can be watered and sewored, and they don't support development at the density this applicant desires on another portion of it, because it's not sewored. It's not that there's no regulations, it's not that we're just making this up as we go along, we have a way to regulate it. If it's not the way you would like to see that happen, that's unfortunate, but we do have a system in place, and I think it works pretty well.
Well, my point is, the, the, Mr. Butler's comments are, the concern is failure of the sewer system. I think that is an unfair concern, given that the ordinances, the law within Oklahoma City does not regulate the ability to have private sewer on anything other than half-acre lots. Other cities have enacted ordinances, the city has the power to go do so, but until they do so, I don't know how you impose concerns that the city's governing body has not codified through ordinance.
Mr. Box, this is Sarah Welch, we'll talk about this in the next item, but our zoning code does call for a thirty thousand square foot lot within our RA and RA two base zoning district. Is that a different, is that different than what you're?
You, the zoning code does not say that you have to have a minimum of thirty thousand square foot in order to have a private onsite sanitary sewer solution. DEQ regulates it, half acre, there is no provision within the code that I have ever been pointed to that has anything other than that, I understand that RA and other zoning districts have certain criteria in terms of lot sizes, but there's not a prohibition within the Oklahoma City municipal ordinances as it relates to utilizing onsite sanitary sewer solutions on half-acre lots. And they could do that, other cities have done it.
Commissioner Chairman. Well, I think, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Fenton.
It, this to me sounds exactly like the fire suppression issue. There's, no, the city has the option to create the requirement, they, they don't, we follow DEQ, DEQ says that this is compliant. I, I think we just have to decide whether the commission, either you're with it or you're not at this point, but.
I think I'm in agreement, I think we understand the issues that are before us, and I, I think we, we understand what the argument is, so let's see where we are as a commission, I'll call for a motion, let's see what happens.
I don't want to get ahead of Commissioner Coffee, but if she doesn't have one, I, I actually recommend that we approve item forty-two in its entirety, not limiting the tracks between the, the thirty-four acre and the one hundred and twenty-three acre.
So your, your, your motion is to lift the urban reserve land use typology layer on the one hundred and fifty-seven acres and whole?
Yep.
I second the motion, Commissioner Coffee.
I have a motion in a second to amend the comprehensive plan to lift the urban reserve layer for CPA twenty twenty zero 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 three, please cast your votes.
Coffee, yes.
Commissioner Hinkle, I believe, had to excuse himself for another meeting, or he had previously texted me that he may have to leave before five o'clock, so somebody mark him as abstained. And the motion passes. Item forty-three?
Mr. Cravens?
Forty-three.
Excuse me, yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that that's accurate, if a person is not present, I'm not sure they're abstaining. I think it's a no vote.
Oh, well, no, it's not a no vote, I guess a non-vote.
Let's ask staff, shall we?
Mr. Brummett, are you on the line with us?
If someone excuses themselves from the meeting, it's not, it is considered a no vote.
It is considered a no vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Not cast as a no vote, it, it's no vote, it has the effect of a no vote.
Right.
But he didn't vote no.
It has the effect of a no vote, right.
Of a no vote, but it's not a no vote.
Okay. So, so can we, can we pass the item with just him not voting, is that the way that works? That's the way it would work if we were in person, so what do we need to do with this vote online, is my question.
I think it'd be the same thing.
Okay, so, Paula, I believe you're pushing all the buttons.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cravens, Kyle White here, I live just south of the proposed development, twenty-three twenty-three South Cemetery Road, I am the adjacent property. I was curious, if you guys are going to be running sewer, will it affect well water?
Sir, give us just a minute, and we'll, we'll get back to you on the next item, but we're handling a procedural matter of the. Sir, give us just a minute and we'll, we'll get back to you on the next item. Um, but we're handling procedural matters in a moment, so bear with us. It, it, can somebody confirm that we got Matt's vote correct? That it was just a non-cast vote?
So you want it as a non-cast vote, as an absent vote?
Correct.
Absent?
Yep.
Okay, I will have to correct it after the meeting, but yes.
Okay, we'll let the record reflect that we're correcting that vote. Uh, Commissioner Powers, thank you for pointing that out. Next item is forty-three, which, uh, is the companion PUD item. That's PUD seventeen seventy-four and application to rezone thirteen thousand Southwest fifteenth Street from AA to PUD seventeen forty-four. JJ, are you introducing this one?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. I stiffed away for a minute. Wasn't sure where we were.
Item forty-three.
Forty-three, this is a two acre tract PUD, one thirty-three acre with an R two base and track two. There's a hundred and twenty-three acres with RA base. Uh, that's one you just heard the complaint amendment on. Uh, there, we recommend approval subject to five technical evaluations. The applicant does not agree with TEs three and five, and David Box represents the application.
Yeah, once again, uh, David Box, five point two call for drive. Um, uh, as JJ stated, we do agree with TEs one, two, four, uh, and six. TEs three and five, we don't. TE three are for all of the reasons that I, I just went through on the cop plan, um, discussion. I'm happy to dive into that again, but, um, we desire half acre lots. That is what is being developed in close proximity to us. And that is what is consistent compatible with the Oklahoma City ordinances. Um, as it relates to open space, um, we do not wish to have thirty percent open space. When you have these, um, rural type developments, um, people view their, their home and their, their larger lot as, as open space. It's not common uh, that you have big open spaces and rural type developments. That's why people like these, these types of lots. Um, they believe they're buying kind of their, their piece of, uh, um, rural land and therefore they utilize their larger lot as the open space. And so that is why we do not wish to commit to thirty percent open space. We will have to plat this. So at the time which we plat, we'll be able to figure out the, the total open space we have, but we will not commit to thirty percent. And so those are the two that we do not agree to for those reasons.
Just for the point of clarification before we begin discussion on the thirty percent, is there a number that you would agree to or are you asking to delete that TE?
We're asking to delete that TE.
Okay.
And on six, I just want to make sure that the setback is meant to be the building setback along the sou- southern boundary. I assume it is, but I just wanted to make sure that it, it's intended to building setback.
Yes.
Commissioner Coffee, this is your ward, ma'am. I'll let you lead our discussion.
Well, I have, uh, had some brief discussion, uh, with Mr. Box, uh, just, uh, generally, I do not agree with the change to, um, the technical evaluation on item three. I believe that we should leave that, uh, as thirty thousand square feet. Uh, I do not object to eliminating technical evaluation number five.
Okay. Uh, other commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant or for staff on this? Hearing none, I'll ask, I do, I know there's at least one person here with us and I'm sorry that I don't know your name, sir, but at this point, if you're with the public and you'd like to be heard.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Start out by giving us your name and address for the record and we'll give you.
Kyle White, I am twenty-three, twenty-three South Cemetery Road. I touch the corner of this property down near Southeast corner.
Okay. What would you like for us to know?
Uh, a few things. Uh, the elevation runoff is gonna be huge because it already is a problem in my, on my property, from that property. Uh, how will that be handled? Because we get normally a large river when it rains, even when it just sprinkles, we get a large river. How will that be misdirected to a different way? So you, that runoff doesn't come through our property from city property now. Uh, what kind of fencing and barriers do we get? I heard the lot size. I heard a half acre lot size. Uh, and then I was also hearing the septic and sewer. If it does turn into sewer, how does that affect the well water in the surrounding properties? The other thing is the borders and the fencing that I see on the borders here, obviously they're not that accurate. However, uh, I will join the rhetoric from that you heard before, which is the trees on my fence line, which is between the barbed wire fence on both sides. Will that stay intact? And it is now a, a, an appropriate time to be able to say yes or no on those trees on that fence line.
Okay, well, there's a lot there, so let's, let me try and unpack it a little bit. Uh, on your issue about drainage, when, uh, the developer seeks to bring about, uh, the creation of the lots, whether those be half acre, thirty thousand feet, whatever it be, they will have to plat that. Uh, and that plating process, uh, is reviewed under the guise of the subdivision regulations, which are ordinances. Some of those ordinances deal with drainage and so the applicant will have to, to basically provide that as a part of, of that, of that application. Where the water goes, how they're gonna handle runoff, how much it's gonna create. Uh, and those are issues that are certainly above my pay grade or intelligence. Uh, but they're all dealt with there and I think city staff could probably add some comment to that or to, to some color to that. On the fencing, uh, we typically don't require, um, developers to fence or create privacy screening in between residential, uh, compatibility, uh, compatible uses. So, um, there won't be any required screening. However, I would venture to guess that these, these lots would be fenced, um, more than likely. Uh, these lots would be fenced from house to house. Um, but again, that's something that I'll let the applicant address if they'd like to. Uh, and then the last thing with the sewer and the, and, uh, infiltration of sewer and all that stuff, uh, I'll let the applicant or someone from staff address that. I'm really not sure, uh, on those environmental issues. Again, if you heard our discussion, uh, the Department of Environmental Quality says that a half acre lot is a minimum size to allow certain types of septic systems. I can't recall which type is acceptable. It's just one offhand. Uh, but it, but there is a type of septic system that's approved by DEQ for half acre. So, um, those would be my comments to try to answer your questions. Uh, JJ, uh, would you mind addressing his question on the drainage real quickly? Uh, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Box to try to answer the other question.
I think Jared could better address that than me.
Okay, Jared?
Sure, I'm here. Um, yeah, if, if I could get the caller's name and, uh, phone number, contact phone number, uh, we can address the drainage, uh, uh, you know, on site, you know, on side or we can call and talk about it. Um, you know, the, we do have a detention requirement, but that's, that is handled at the time of plan review or we're, uh, and, uh, and so it's kind of done on a case by case basis. And so, uh, if I could get your contact information, we can give you a call and, uh, schedule, uh, some sort of consultation on it, if you would.
You mind providing his phone?
Uh, yes, sir. My name is Kyle White. Uh, four, zero, five, four, two, zero, nine, eight, zero, four.
Okay, I got it. I, we will, uh, give you a call soon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jared, very much. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Box, do you want to try to address the, the fencing issue? If you have an answer to that, you may not.
I think.
This is Mark.
There you go.
Can you hear me? Mark, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting. Uh, I'm the engineer on this project. We understand the drainage in that area and we will take care of drainage through the existing pond on the south line. Um, the lots, uh, along the south, we will, we can agree to the, to fencing those, but they will be fenced on a, a house by house basis.
Right.
Yeah, and then the sewer, uh, I did not understand the gentleman's sewer question.
The, the, the question is that from groundwater, he served by well is what I took it. Uh, Mr. White, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, so he served by well, Mark. The question is, is will the, this, the sewer use, the, um, the septic sewer create issues with the groundwater?
Uh, I would state that DEQ would not permit it if it, if it would. So, we're not, it, they're not gonna permit us to put an aerobic system within a, an, an unreasonable distance from his well to create an issue with as well.
And that's what I was alluding to, Mr. White, is that, uh, that's, DEQ has regulations on those things. Your, your well, as you know, is a registered marked well, so.
Right, so, but all three of my wells are along this fence line that is made for new, new development. I mean, it's within six feet of the fence. All three of them, in three, within a hundred yard marks.
Okay.
I noted that.
One, one second, Mark. Mr. White, do you have other questions or concerns for us besides the ones you brought for?
Uh, uh, the, not, not really, no, sir. That was really just my, and, and I'm not really worried about the fence. The fences on the properties, to be honest with you, I really didn't want all of the, the trees and then my barbed wire fence that is currently there to be taken down or, uh, moved. It's attached to everything else.
Understood. Well, we, we appreciate you calling in and making comments. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this item today? Again, this is, uh, PUD seventeen seventy-four, star six on your phone or the spacebar. Hearing no additional comments from the public or commissioners, uh, Commissioner Coffee, this is, um, this is your ward, so I don't know if you were ready to make a motion or have additional comments, but, um, floor is yours.
Do we have any other comments on, uh, technical evaluation three? Any other commissioners feel differently about that one?
I'm, I'm curious why it's needed. Um, I mean, isn't that the, the rule for DEQ, thirty thousand square feet? No, that, that's the point is that, that is not the rule. The rule is half acre and that's what we seek.
Alright, okay.
Alright, so we're changing technical evaluation three to one half acre?
I think we just delete it.
We just want?
Well, if, you, you, you would make the minimum lot size, I'm sorry, you wouldn't delete it. You, you would say the minimum lot size within track two shall be one half acre.
The putt already says that.
Alright.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. They were all, I'm not, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Coffee, you'd be deleting TE three and TE five so long as you're in agreement.
Alright, we deleted TE five. And what, what did we do with TE three?
We deleted it. It, we, i- if, if you delete it, you're taking it back to the applicant's PUD application, which is half acre lots.
Alright. Alright then, uh, I make a motion to approve, to recommend approval of PUD seventeen seventy-four with technical amendment, technical evaluations, one, two, four and six.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to recommend approval, uh, PUD seventeen seventy-four to, to city council. Please cast your votes.
Coffee, yes.
And the motion carries, so the, uh, application is approved and going to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the, uh, agenda for separate items to be heard. If I'm not mistaken, Jeff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that brings us on the agenda to additional items, communications and reports. First thing is planning commission committees. Um, this would be, uh, the drainage committee. Uh, there were some emails that circulated. Uh, one of those came from Jared Norris, which was a proposed solution to the drainage comment that we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, I forwarded a copy of that proposed language to Commissioner Claire and Commissioner Powers who are on the committee with me. Uh, Jared Norris is on the line with us. Jared, would you like to provide us an update there and the suggested language for the rest of the commissioners' benefit?
Uh, I can. Um, I'm glad that you have, everyone has a, a chance to take a look at that. Uh, I was gonna provide a little bit of background and I just wanted to say how much, you know, we appreciate everyone's assistance with this, but, uh, the note, you know, a- as everyone's aware, uh, or, you know, should be aware that there was a, uh, there was a note. So earlier this year at the May fourteenth planning commission meeting, a note provided by Public Works was including the technical evaluation section. That is that note, uh, that, uh, was shared. Uh, and, uh, you know, this, the note was included in several items on that day's agenda and there was a deliberation, uh, by the planning commission that it was decided the note would be excluded from the items that day and a drainage committee would be created. Uh, the, the drainage committee then met on June fourth to discuss and, uh, the propos- and, and the proposed note, uh, which was shared with the community, development community. Uh, then at, uh, at our last planning commission meeting on June eleventh, we decided that we needed more time to formulate our recommendation and that brings us to today. You know, the, the note, the note of issue was intended to reinforce that the detention requirement will be determined at the time of public works plan review. Uh, this, this, this is public works current policy. However, there are current standard detention, there are also current standard detention required notes that have been provided in the past as staff comments that are in conflict with this policy. Uh, the intent of the new note, uh, that's under review was to address this conflict. Somehow the note was introduced into the technical evaluation section of the item reports on May fourteenth. And after review, we don't believe this is the proper placement of such a note to enforce the chapter sixteen of the city's ordinance and therefore we recommend this note or a, a very similar note be included in the staff comments section and not under the technical evaluation section of the agenda item reports in the future. Uh, in addition, the other detention requirement notes that may provide conflicting information be removed from the staff comments section. And, uh, I can, I can share my screen now, hopefully. Well, host, I, I guess you have to participate, but, um, you know, but there's a couple of notes on that email that was circulated that, uh, we are removing as well.
Go ahead, Jared.
Try to do it. Okay, got it. Okay, okay. Okay, got it. So the, hopefully y'all see this, but these blue notes are the ones that have come in conflict with our implementation of this policy at the time of plan review. Uh, and, and we're trying to address that. We're trying to remove these blue notes here on our standard staff comments and, uh, really replace it with this other note that, uh, reinforces that the detention requirement will be determined at the su- time of plan review. And that is, that is the purpose. Uh, we, you know, we believe these proposed actions will, will help improve our administration of chapter sixteen's detention requirement. Uh, I know that during this review, we have also spoken about providing additional information such as a detention requirement map in the spirit of be, trying to be more transparent or open, uh, with, with our process. However, we are concerned that by introducing this additional information, it would further introduce more conflicting or erroneous information to that process. Uh, at this time, we are ready to provide, uh, this, you know, this language here and, and for discussion. Uh, and I'm ready to answer any questions regarding this recommendation at this time.
Jared, I appreciate it. I think a lot of commissioners, um, with the exception of, 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 you know, Mr. Claire, myself and Ms. Powers, you know, probably need a little bit of time to review the language. Um, also, since it's being introduced in this meeting, I think it would be appropriate to circulate uh, to some of the folks who had expressed concern about it. Uh, I know it certainly concerned folks that it was a TE. Um, I think there were some, some concerns about the language, which I believe that yellow language represents language you've amended from the original note that, that showed up in staff reports back in, was it May?
May, May fourteenth.
Yes.
This, this was the original language, yes. Um, you know, I mean, I think we're, we're willing to amend that language if need be to help support the development community. I know that we've gotten some comments back from, from the development community and, uh, you know, uh, you're, we're willing, more than willing to kind of work with them to, uh, better enhance the, our process here.
But just, just to be, just to be clear for other commissioners, your position is that this note. But just, just to be, just to be clear for other commissioners, your position is that this note does nothing more than memorialize what's required under the ordinances today?
That's correct, and it, and it also enforces the policy that we have in effect today. So we've, we've always been doing this policy, you know, or enacting this policy. And we've had a couple notes in the past that have conflicted with this policy. And that's, that's really the, the intent of this note. And I think this note was included in the TE section when it really should have been included in, in the staff comments only. And so, you know, we're proposing to remove the two conflicting notes and just replacing it with this yellow note as, as a standard note. And like I said, we're, we're willing to, you know, if we want to work on a language, you know, and then present it, you know, maybe we, we provide, get some more comments from the development community, and then present kind of the final standard language at the next planning commission, we would be more than willing to, to do that.
Well, let me, let's, let's start here. Let's see what other questions, or what questions or comments other commissioners have on this item. So I'll turn the floor over to them. If anybody has comments, Commissioner Wise, please feel free.
We have the authority to impose this requirement without any need to seek any, like, actual ordinance from, from the city. There's no other, other legal authority necessary for us to enact this and just put it in the staff comments as suggested.
Yeah, so what, what Jared is saying is that his belief is that this comment reflects the ordinances as the, as they exist today. And by putting it in the Public Works comments section of our staff report comments, that's what, they're just trying to make sure that what the ordinance is, is reflected in that. There were questions about whether or not that was true, or if it had gone further. And, and maybe that confusion was just, as, as Jared said, there's been issues in the past where notes have been included that weren't exactly in line with policy or ordinance. And, and so that created fear or concern from people in the public. I don't know if anybody is still on the call, because I can only see the screen share view, and then I can only see certain people's faces without scrolling around. But at this point, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to, to comment on this specifically. I, I just say we're not taking any action on this, other than the action that would be taken is we're trying to help make sure there's consensus, so that if this comment shows up in staff reports, we don't delete it as a part of our review of future applications, so.
Yeah, and we, and we want to provide the, the best information we can to the development community, so they know, you know, the steps to move their project forward. And so that's, you know, that's, that's really what we're trying to do. We don't want to cause, you know, cause conflict, you know, some, you know, produce information that may be contradictory to what our policy is.
Got it. Okay. Well, what I would say at this point.
This is Mark Grubbs. I'm on my phone, and I, I can't review that language at this time. So I would like a little bit of time to at least review, review that language.
That seems reasonable to me. Cindy, if you could, would, would you email this note that's on our screen? Can you email that to the commissioners? Or Jared, can you do that? Can someone do that?
I can do that.
Okay. I think that's appropriate. Mark, I know that you and the six people that expressed concern that I emailed, I'll, I will ensure that you get a copy of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim Johnson. One point, I just want the, the planning commission to understand that if, if we don't know whether or not detention is required before we draw our plat and submit our first set of plans for review, where the street and everything has already been designed, there's been grading plans done, that's too late. We need to know at the time we submit a preliminary plat or a zoning case, not a special use permit or a site plan, but a zoning case or a, and not even a zoning case, probably a plat. But for commercial properties that don't require zoning, I'd say at a zoning case level, we need to know if that's, if, if on their map it has included this tract of land where detention is required, so that we can make inquiries and then plan for it. If we don't know until the, our checkprints go in for them to start reviewing, we're, we're $50,000 down the road in fees. So I think it's important that we really understand the right timing to advise the consultants, because we don't have access to this map or understanding of things that change on the map. We need to know, you know, when we're going to be required to provide detention.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Powers, in this, this really is the very crux of this issue. We routinely tell people that zoning is not really the best time for them to protest or raise issues about drainage, because, you know, zoning is very preliminary. It's really, you know, before any kind of planning has been done. Very often, developers don't really know what they're going to do with a piece of property when they zone it. It's, it's, you know, almost a, a part of the financing process. It's really early on. But on the other hand, what Mr. Johnson is saying is true. I mean, we have, we've got to be able to hone in on this particular point. The question of when it is appropriate, and by that I mean, appropriate in providing all the necessary safeguards, but also appropriate in permitting developers to do a, a reasonable and fiscally possible amount of planning and, you know, expenditure of funds on a sliding scale with respect to, you know, what they're getting back. I mean, it'd be easy to require them to give us, you know, every detail of what they're going to do with a piece of property before we allow them to, to zone it, but that's, that's just not reasonable. It's not feasible. It's not possible. So, I mean, this, this is the big question. It's like, what, what is that point? When do we know what's really going to be required? It's hard to know that without knowing what use is actually going to be made of the property, more than just the zoning.
Yeah, I think that's, I think you're spot on, and I, I totally agree with you. I think, not to speak for staff, but in speaking with staff, their comments to me are that the challenge becomes when a piece of property is zoned, and we get one of those pictures that shows what it's going to be. But then 10 years later, it comes along, and a lot has changed in terms of the way drainage works upstream from this and other development that's happened around it, and then the development changes, and they feel compromised. So I think, I understand both sides of this argument, I think fairly well, and, and I respect both sides. I think, to Commissioner Pennington's point, our job here is not to set ordinance. I just want to make sure that we're not changing the requirements through a policy that alters the ordinances that are of record. And so what I would suggest is let's circulate this note. If other commissioners have comments, I think it would be appropriate to email those comments to staff. Again, this is not an item that we're taking action on as a commission. This is about notes that appear in future items that we may remove, and being respectful of staff's desire to try to, to ameliorate this, this, the issue that I just articulated. So, and at the same time, I will ensure this note is circulated to the, the folks who have expressed interest within the development community, to me, to, to make sure they have a chance to review it. To, to Mr. Grubbs' point, he's driving around in his car or whatever and can't look at it at the moment. So let's, let's do that and provide that feedback. I think I'm prepared to move along, so long as we're certain that this ordinance is memorializing, I'm sorry, that this note is memorializing the ordinance, because beyond that, it's really outside of our purview.
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, just, I mean, to make it clear, assuming, you know, God forbid that there are people out there listening to this just because they're listening to it. This information, this document, this proposed language should be available to anybody who wants to look at it and review it.
100% agree, yeah. And, and, and it's here, and so certainly, again, you know, sorry, Cindy, to keep throwing people your way, but Cindy, like in, in staff, can certainly provide a copy if anybody else would like to see it. I already put her phone number away. 297...something.
2289.
Thank you, Cindy. 2289. So, look, I appreciate Jared, I appreciate you and your department very much working on this. I, I, I believe that you have the best intentions at heart here. We're just trying to make this as fair and upfront as possible. I will articulate again, I think the fact that we have a map that could provide some guidance as to the direction that the city is headed with its drainage requirements, that's not made available to the public at large, really is sort of silly. And is something that I, again, strongly encourage you, guys, to review how you could do a better job of putting people on notice when drainage requirements are coming their way, detentions coming their way because of these maps. So I'll leave it there. I appreciate everyone's comments. Next item is planning commission members and the essence of time. Without asking anybody individually if you have comments, please feel free to make them now, commission, planning commission members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to just, I want to just commend you for your running of the meeting today. It was very efficient, and it seemed to be very well organized. We had a long and not particularly controversial, but, you know, not easy agenda by any means. You did a wonderful job.
I appreciate that very much. I, I had sent an email to, to the commissioners individually and asked them for, you know, feedback. I, I would just tell each of you that my job is to run this meeting on our behalf. So if there is ever feedback you have for me in the open meeting, or otherwise, I'm certainly open to it. I want to run these meetings the way we, as a commission, and we, as the city, can feel really good about. So I'm always open to, to, to comments that, that you have, and I appreciate that, Janice. Anybody else? Hearing none. Planning Department, Jeff, Sarah, you guys have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we had both the preservation plan and the sustainability plan adopted by the city councils, so appreciate your involvement in that and contributions to those, and of course, your approval of both of those documents. And then just, I, going forward, we intend, one of the, one of the action items in Preserve OKC is to put a little bit of information into the staff reports, your staff reports, when applicable, if there is any kind of historic resources in or around these development proposals. And just a point of clarification, again, going back on that whole RA and lot size business, there is, so there is, as David said, you know, there's no, you know, there's no blanket statement in the code that I'm aware of anyway, that says that, you know, thou shalt have, or if it's less than 30,000 square feet. What there is, is in the context of the RA code table, it lists a bunch of lot sizes, and it says, you know, 30,000 square feet, and then where, where it lists 20,000 square feet, it has an asterisk that says developments within, with minimum lot sizes less than 30,000 square feet. Required from the public. So that's, that's where it is in the code, and granted, it's not a blanket statement that applies everywhere. That's, that's specific to the RA table. I just wanted to, you know, point that out. In terms of what we have in our code, that's, that's what it says. So, you know, we, staff has in the past used that as guidance as well in, in terms of, you know, what, what's an appropriate lot size for sewer or not, or not sewer. So I just wanted to mention that. And other than that, I, I have no other, no other items.
Thanks, Jeff. Development Services Department, JJ?
No, sir.
Okay. Hey, one piece of feedback that I got from a commission member that I provided to you guys, and it's just kind of a curious thing, something to think about, was the way we utilize the consent agenda. I think we did that beautifully today. But one of the questions that was brought to my attention was, well, if we have a final plat, and there's no objection, and there's no variance, why would the scenario be that it wouldn't be on the consent agenda? I think that's an interesting thing to think about. I, I don't know that we need to comment on it now, but I just ask you guys to stew on that and give it some thought, because I thought it was good feedback from, from a planning commission member, and I thought I would, I would share it with, with the group and with staff. Municipal Counselor's Office, a memo was circulated to everybody that they were kind enough to put together for us in regards to our decisions on plats and lot splits being quasi-judicial. I printed a copy of it, I read it. They've convinced me. Dan, do you want to comment on that briefly?
The only thing I'd say is that when the planning commission is hearing plats and deed approvals, you're acting in a quasi-judicial basis, like a court, and you're not able to receive ex parte communications. For those of you who've been on the planning, the Board of Adjustment is very similar. Board of Adjustment is a fact-finding board, and rich, renders the decision based on those facts. So it's quasi-judicial, and you're, you're prohibited from having ex parte communications with the applicant or anybody else.
Yeah, and I think that's really important on, on, when you're contacted by the public or from applicants. I'll just experience share that one. What I say when somebody calls me on those, what I have said, since Susan brought that to my attention, is, hey, look, I understand. The nature of this case won't allow me to discuss it with you outside the meeting. Please bring those concerns in, and we can talk about it there, and I'm more than happy to answer your questions. Then, in the meantime, staff can answer any questions that you might have. And, and that's really kind of where I leave it with both applicants and protestors, should they call me. And it's primarily on plats. And the most recent one I can think of, which was really unfortunate, was the one-lot apartment complex in Port A, and when I told people that, I thought their heads were going to explode. But, you know, that's the right thing to do, because it protects the city. So, Dan, thanks to you and Susan and others who put that brief together for us. I would encourage everyone to read it. Any questions on that from commission members? Hearing none, we'll move along to citizens to be heard. I don't know if anybody's been wading through all this. I hope not. But if there's anybody that wants to be heard today, this is your time to do it, members of the public. I'll pause for just a moment. Star six on your phone, spacebar on your computer. Make sure your device is not muted. Hearing none, we'll skip other business, because there's nothing listed, and we'll go to adjournment, and I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Are you opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great week and weekend.
Thanks.